Welcome, everybody. I'm going to call the June 14th, 2022 School Committee Meeting into session. Welcome. First up on the agenda is always a bittersweet occasion, but we're recognizing the retirees. I'm sure it's not bittersweet for them. But so I first just want to forgive my ad libbing. I love that we do this every year, and it's just so nice to be able to recognize all that you give to the community and have given to the community. And also as a segue to Dr. Beridos and Dr. Mello asking you to continue to give to the community usually through subbing.
Maybe.
So, thank you. Dr. Beridos, Dr. Mello, would you like to say anything?
Sure, I would love to. I'm looking out and I'm seeing those of you that retired in the middle of the year, and I see a little bit of tans and big smiles, and those of you that are like, okay, the end of this week is marking the beginning of your retirement. And we have so many people here to celebrate and so many years of wonderful dedicated service to our students in Foxborough. We could not be more fortunate with the folks that are here this evening. We have a number of people that are retiring that are not able to be here, but we celebrate them as well. And I just think about these last, really, two and a half years and the dedication of our staff and our teachers and what you've done is really remarkable. And there were many people across not just Massachusetts, but the country that retired earlier because of what's been taking place in the last couple of years and how much harder it has been. So I really, our gratitude for our students and for the district for you hanging on through what's really most difficult these last couple of years, and we know how much that's meant to our students and to your other colleagues by having you there. So, thank you for all that you do. Yes, shameless plug, if you're interested in subbing in the future. We would love to have you back. We understand you might need to take a couple of months, the beginning of the school year, so you have a different.
We could use the community sign-in sheet, because I don't think anybody signed up there, but you could sign up on your way out tonight. Perfect.
Very efficient. Yes, but we're just so fortunate with the number of years of continual service, people that have left and come back even. So I know that we're going to go through here the list in a moment to recognize you individually, but I'll turn it over to Dr. Mello.
Well, it's hard to believe when I look out at the faces that are actually retiring. You're all too young to retire. You all still have so much energy, you could probably run circles around me, and I'm just so proud to have called you my colleagues and to work with you and to learn from you. It's really been a treat in all different capacities in moving into the Assistant Soup, working more closely with the Transportation Office and more closely with the high school, and really getting to know everyone. So I echo everything that you said. Thank you. This has been a tough time, and you really deserve this. So go and enjoy every, I know you should sub, that's true, but go enjoy. You could maybe take more than a couple of months, maybe I'll be a little more generous. A couple more months and then, yeah, we would love to have you, because we miss your faces and we are super excited when we see retirees in the halls and in the classrooms, and so are the kids. So you're always welcome back to the Foxborough family, anytime.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if you're going to be doing the recognition of the individuals, or would you like me to?
And then I can pass out, too. If you don't, I, you mind if I pass out?
No, not at all. So we traditionally have a small gift for you, which is a small token that you will hopefully fondly remember all of your years in the Foxborough Public Schools. And I will start with, I know Pam Anderson, our special education teacher and department head at the high school. She's not able to be with us this evening, but she has 18 years of service at Foxborough High School. So the number of years I'm going to share is not the total years that they have dedicated their lives to education, it's just here in Foxborough. So Sue Bailey, did I see Sue?
Yes.
Yeah, it's back there in the back, I thought I did. Sue Bailey is one of our reading teachers at the Ahern Middle School, and she has been there for 16.8. How about that? Lynda Cameron's not able to be with us this evening. She's one of our American Sign Language teachers at the high school, and she has been there for 18 years. Deanne, I saw Deanne, where is she? Over there. Dan Damish, he's been at the Ahern Middle School as one of our wellness teachers for 29 years. Dennis Fletcher, he's sitting back there in the back. He has been with the Foxborough Schools for 12 and a half years before he retired in the fall, but I think he had like 30 or 40 years in Boston prior to that, running our Transportation Department and keeping those buses going and leading that. So Dennis. And Lynn, I see you over there. Lynn Jermaine, she's been over at the Burl, and I believe you did some time at the Ahern as well, or was it just Burl? Okay. But 26 years. And Lynn is retiring from teaching grade three over at the Burl. And Deb Grant, she has been at the high school, our World Language Department, you're going to hear a little bit of a theme here. I think they all decided to get together and say, okay, now we can retire. But speaking and teaching French for the last 14 years at Foxborough High School. So Deb Grant. I don't think Kathy Joseph was able to be with us this evening, but she, again, World Language Department at the high school, and 24 years. And Ellen Castarubis, she's an educational assistant at the high school, not able to be with us this evening, but she has been there for 18 years. And Jerry Lizowski, who is a secretary over at the Ahern, helps to keep Ms. Frazier in check, I know that part, for nearly 22 years at the Ahern. And then Michelle, where's Michelle here, McCarthy?
She was supposed to be.
She was supposed to be here, so she's just, she's never late to anything, too. So 21 years at the Burl, and she retired in December, so quite impressive there as the principal of the Burl School. And Joanne McDonald, I did see Joanne there, yes. Joanne is retiring from the Burl as well after 24 years and one of our fabulous kindergarten educational assistants with our little ones. Ellen McGrath was not able to be with us this evening, 26 years as an educational assistant at Foxborough High School. And then Kathy Merrigan, as far as transportation, she also retired with Dennis back in the fall after 21 and a half years. She was his sidekick as an assistant transportation manager. And then Diana Myers-Pacla, our principal at the high school, who's going to be retiring as well after 25 years in Foxborough. And then Christine Relva, sitting back there in the back, math teacher at Foxborough High School for the last 21 years. And then I'm looking, Barbara Rochon, I do not, I didn't think she was going to be able to be with us, just checking. After 29 years at the Ahern, math teacher, she retired. Irene Titmus, Spanish teacher at Foxborough High School, after 23 years, do you see Spanish, French, American Sign Language? And then Eileen Mornat, she is retiring from the high school and the guidance secretary after 30 years. And then Laureen White, who's not able to be with us this evening, the guidance department head at the high school, she's also retiring after 24 years. So a number of years, which actually adds up to 442.6 years of service between all of them. Joe, did I add that correctly?
You're missing one. I just found this out Saturday, our Founder's Day. Mrs. Bagley from the Igo School is retiring.
Okay, well, I have to go with the official ones right here. That's what I have at this point. But we would like to congratulate all of you for all of your years of service. We are so fortunate, as I said before, just to have such wonderful people and then wonderful educators serving our students. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something, too?
Please.
Yeah, thank you. Well, first, I just want to thank you all for your service to Foxborough. I spent 50 years of my life in Foxborough and have known a lot of you, worked with some of you when I was there, hired some of you. Christine Relva, we hired, I hired her 21 years ago. I've known Dan Damish for 32 years. I worked in a summer camp with Dan before you were teaching, I think, in Foxborough, is that right?
I won't tell you any of those stories.
Yeah, no stories. And Lynn, you taught my daughter. So my daughters are 27 and 28, but let me just thank you on behalf of me personally and my family, all the things you gave to me and my family and my daughters. So thank you for your years of service.
So I tend to tear up at this kind of thing, so I will promise not to. Again, thank you all very much. On behalf of the community, your commitment to our students, to our education, you know, to everybody in the community is admirable and very much appreciated. Personally, the experience my family has had in Foxborough Public Schools, I tell, every chance I get a microphone in front of me, I try to tell everybody that, but I could not have asked for a better community to have my children and my family be a part of, and you guys are certainly one of the biggest reasons for that. So thank you.
Thank you so much for, thank you so much for joining us here. It's lovely to see your soon-to-be-even-more-well-rested faces, and we just can't thank you enough for your dedication. So, anybody else? Well, thank you. And with that, I'm sure you all want to stay for the rest of the meeting, obviously. But if you did need to step out for a quick drink of water, that's obviously understandable. The doors are locked, though, so.
If that water's on a beach somewhere, that's fine.
Until you put your name on the community sign-in sheet, and then we'll follow up you in six months.
I think before we have you exit, we're going to have you come up this way so we can at least like shake your hand, if you don't mind, and then.
Come on up.
Yeah, we couldn't do this.
I don't want to reach.
I know, right?
I'm going to go over here. Come on.
For being so good to still be.
These chairs are too big.
Tricky times. Congrats.
Anytime.
Thank you.
You want to come over?
Thanks, Kathy, for everything. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Foxborough's so lucky to have all of you. It's so true. Congratulations. Confused about direction.
I had two of your girls.
I wasn't going to tell you that I'm going to retire, but I'm like, the last couple of years. I know, I'm losing my, oh, I got to.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
I had to go to the guy.
I got a big rope line on.
Everybody's family.
You wouldn't do that.
Water.
Hi, honey bunny. What in the world?
Okay, my chair got swiped all this. I got to find where the lever is. There you go. Okay. We have him in my office. That's great. Thank you. As you're meeting.
We open public comments.
We do. Actually, yeah, we just checked in case somebody came, thank you, Mrs. Mello, I appreciate it. Okay, that's great, thank you. Next is the open public comments section of our meeting, and there, oh, that's right. And no one in the audience is here to speak, and nor did we have any community inbox submissions, but I do want to remind anybody listening that those are always two good ways to participate at any meeting, because we do obviously save all that stuff for our record, and everybody on the committee gets it and hears it whether they're not, whether they're here or not. So next, we're going to go to approval of minutes. So first is the May 17th minutes. Do any committee members have any comments, questions, concerns, or amendments they'd like to add?
I move we accept the May 17th School Committee Minutes?
A second.
Excellent. All in favor? That's 400. Thank you. Next, we have our Teaching and Learning Highlight.
May 3rd minutes?
Oh, I'm so sorry, May 3rd minutes.
May 3rd minutes.
I, thank you. I printed double-sided in an effort to be, thank you, sorry. Yeah, exactly, and then I folded half my stuff away. So next up is the May 3rd minutes. Any amendments, questions, concerns? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from the May 3rd executive session.
I'll second it.
All in favor? 400. Minutes are accepted and can be published. And I didn't hide another one in there, did I?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can we have a vote to release those executive session minutes, or no?
Yes. Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we release the minutes from the May 3rd executive session.
A second.
All in favor? 400. Thank you so much for the reminder. Next up, we have our Teaching and Learning Highlight concerning Bridgewater State, the Invention Convention, which I'm excited to hear all about. Who would like to preside over that? Dr. Mello?
Do you want to introduce?
Oh, you can do it, it's okay.
Sure. Although I'm very excited and very proud about it. If we can have Mr. Alan Sharman and his fabulous students come up front to our guest table, they are our Teaching and Learning Highlight this evening. You're going to hear about, we actually had 12 students that competed at Bridgewater State University in the Invention Convention, and this is something that's been taking place for many, many years. But what you're going to hear this evening, as these three fabulous students share their experience, the outcome in addition to what they invented and their process. So, Mr. Sharman, I don't know if you wanted to come forward and talk a little bit first or introduce, you can pull up one of those other chairs.
Sure. So the Bridgewater State University hosts an Invention Convention.
Did you use the mic?
Slide the mic over. No, no, the microphone.
The Bridgewater State University has been hosting an Invention Convention for many years, and I think it was unfortunately discontinued for a couple of years due to COVID. But so this year, we participated, and we competed against many other middle school teams from the state of Massachusetts. And I've been working with some really fabulous students. We actually had two inventions this year. We had enough students to create two different teams and two different inventions. And I have to say, the students, these young inventors, are really fabulous to work with, and they had some awesome ideas, and I just facilitate, I don't offer my ideas, I just facilitate to get their ideas. And it really truly is, you know, remarkable, every time I do this, I think about how creative the, our young people are. They come up with thoughts and ideas about things that, you know, me as an old fart, don't think of. So they're really great. And then they work very hard to create a prototype for the invention and a presentation, and they did that this year, and I'm proud to say that one of our teams won first prize for the best invention at the convention, at the contest. The other team, which is not here, represented here, won first prize for the invention to be most likely to be marketed. So that was quite an honor for them also. But this team here will discuss their invention, they'll, I don't know which one of you would like to talk, but Grace, you're pretty familiar, so take the stand.
So my name is Grace Goodman, I'm a seventh grade student, and Mr. Sharman has been really wonderful facilitating, as he stated, the Invention Convention. So our invention was about a common problem that I think a lot of people have, so raccoons and other vermin, you know, just getting into your trash and making a big mess and, you know, making, you're late for work, or in this case, my dad. And he would always talk about it at the dinner table, about how annoying the raccoons were, and eventually we resorted to bungee cords. So bungee cords started getting attached to trashcans, and there were a bunch of different ways in which he tried to keep the raccoons out. So when I got invited to the Invention Convention Club, I was like, well, this is a pretty common problem, and there must be like a better way to fix this than just bungee cords, because it's also very inconvenient. So we started a prototype, we had multiple different locking mechanisms, which was like the major deterrent, and we also came up with some natural deterrents like peppermint oils and Epsom salts to like irritate senses instead of just keeping them out. So we pretty much just brainstormed a bunch of different locks, and we tested it, we made prototypes, we tried different versions for the coating, which we added the peppermint oil and the Epsom salt to. So we tried resin, and we tried epoxy, and we tried different types of glues, and then we made a presentation, wrapped everything up. We had to add last minute some things about clean water, which we originally unaware of, but it was actually good, surprisingly, because it made our invention more unique in a way. And then we decided to market it as the fact that water contamination with certain items that aren't properly disposed and put into trashcans, and when they get knocked over and it rains, all of these harmful chemicals can leach into the soil and go into waterways and contaminate ecosystems. So we really just tied together something that can be easily instated in normal suburban homes and like solve a common problem while also battling against water contamination, and that was our invention.
Grace, are these members of your team here?
Yes, this is Kalen, and this is Eli. Kalen did a lot on the coating for the project. Originally, we did, we had some other ideas, we weren't able to finish in time, but it was also a really interesting concept, so he really helped with that. And Eli helped with some of the natural deterrents. He took a bunch of his mom's essential oils and mixed it all together and found the best like mix, so that was really great. He made the scent, and yeah.
How are you collecting data on this stuff? Were you, were you prototyping all of them?
So originally, when we had the locks, we had to make, we brainstormed, we had two main ideas, and at the brainstorming point, we already eliminated one and just went with one of them because we were running out of time, and the other one was just, it was well-engineered, but it was very difficult to open, so we just went with one of the locks and hoped it'd work, and it did. And yeah, we kind of winged it on that one, and for the, for the coating, yeah.
Grace, did you ever take the prototype and use it?
Yes, I tested it, and it seemed to work fine. There was like, it was knocked over, but it wasn't like, there wasn't trash out of it, so it seemed to work. I'm not sure what knocked it over, because I don't know what happened, but it seemed to be effective.
Angry raccoon scratches on the side. Frustration and couldn't.
We had a metal trashcan, actually, and some crazy raccoon made this like huge dent in this metal trashcan, and my dad was kind of like, what? He was like chewed through the rubber one, it was, they're very, they're surprisingly very dedicated to getting your trash.
Can you tell us about the coating? So maybe you can tell us about the coating, and I'd love to know about the oils that you mixed, too, so maybe each can speak about that.
I didn't really do much, I just sat there for 10 hours, and, not in a row. And it was just a basic, it was like a motion sensor that would, it was going to go with Eli's spray bottle.
Sure.
So when it sensed the motion, it would spray out the spray.
And if given more time, would you, would that something you'd like to see folded in?
Well, I had finished the code, the only problem was the motor that we had wasn't strong enough to activate the bottle, but other than that, it would have worked, I think.
Nice.
And for the oils, we used peppermint, since it irritated the senses. And since all the oils, the rest of them kind of smelled nice, I used lime, since the citrus irritated the eyes.
Sure.
And that's basically all.
You combined like 37 different flavors.
That was it first.
What did you do first?
Well, I combined a bunch of different things to see if it would, would make it more potent, but it really didn't, so I just at the end went with like two or three drops of lime and a lot of peppermint.
Sounds like Thomas Edison, right? Edison's quote, you know, he failed a thousand times, and he only, he had to fail a thousand times to do once, so.
He only had to succeed once.
Yep, that's right. That's excellent.
They engineered and designed and engineered this really clever spring-loaded locking system for the cover of the garbage truck. It worked, it worked really well.
Nice. Nice. And if given more time, not that, I mean, we're near the end of the year, if given more time, what would have been your next move?
Well, originally, we were thinking about, like Kalen said, with the better way to apply the scent and some of the natural deterrents. Originally, we did not actually put the coating on the actual trashcan because we were worried about how well it was going to stick on, so instead, we had like a sample, like, you know, on a piece of plastic, and we presented that as like a, you know, something that could be applied onto the trashcan, because since it was a mixture of glue and magnesium sulfate and peppermint oil and the scent, and then mixed all together, and just slashing it on the trashcan evenly and effectively would have been difficult and very messy, so we thought it would be a better idea just to show a sample. And Mr. Sharman was saying about the spring locks, so originally, we're going to use just springs themselves with, but instead, we decided to move to spring-loaded hinges. Yes, thank you. And these hinges were self-closing, so they were springlocked, and we used those instead because we couldn't find the right springs, because originally, we ordered springs, but they were way too small. And yeah, there's lots of like improvements that could be made, but those are the ones that we kind of brainstormed out but couldn't finish in time.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, what attracted you all to participate in the Invention Convention?
Lots of free time, and it seemed like it would be something interesting to do.
I thought it would just be fun to make something.
And Grace?
I really enjoy engineering in general, and I like solving problems that are just very common, and when they're just, when there's like a problem and it's, it's just really not addressed because it's kind of small and household, it's just sometimes making something of your own to fix it that hasn't really been invented yet is just, it's really exciting, and it's really fun and challenging, and I really enjoy it personally, which is why I was very happy that I got invited.
And have you started coming up with the ideas of what your next invention might be?
I'm pretty sure there's supposed to be a theme each year, so we would have to get the prompt first before we could like design anything that goes with it.
Incredibly diplomatic answer. That is so mature. Thank you for that, that was awesome. Gentlemen, anything that came out of this that you, did you have fun? Did you get what you thought you were going to get out of it? And would you do it again?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you, guys. It sounds like a phenomenal experience, regardless of where you play. So that's awesome, but just the fact that you got together and came up with the idea, figured out how to execute it, tested it, innovated on that, that, those are awesome things that will serve you so well for the rest of your life, so congratulations.
Thank you for, thank you for working with us. Yes, please, Mr. Sharman.
I do have a quick question, actually. Great job, amazing job. It's great to just be involved, but I think it's even greater to think at first place. That's amazing. And I'm very curious, Mr. Sharman, maybe you can answer this, about the team that isn't here that won the most marketable, what was their invention? I just was curious about it.
So they invented a pair of sneakers that were spring-loaded for jumping. Really interesting. And we produced a prototype that didn't work exactly as planned and designed, but I know with some improvements and.
And have you started coming up with the ideas of what your next invention might be?
I'm pretty sure there's supposed to be a theme each year. So we would have to get the prompt first before we could like design anything that goes with it.
Incredibly diplomatic answer. So mature. Thank you for that. That was awesome. Gentlemen, anything that came out of this that you, did you have fun? Did you get what you thought you were going to get out of it? And would you do it again?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you, guys. It sounds like a phenomenal experience regardless of where you play. So that's awesome. But just the fact that you got together and came up with the idea, figured out how to execute it, tested it, innovated on that, that, those are awesome things that will serve you so well for the rest of your life. So congratulations.
Thank you for, thank you for working with us. Yes, please, Ms. Sharman.
I do have a quick question, actually. Great job, amazing job. It's great to just be involved, but I think it's even greater to think at first place. That's amazing. And I'm very curious, Mr. Sharman, maybe you can answer this about the team that isn't here that won the most marketable. What was their invention? I just was curious about it.
So they invented a pair of sneakers that were spring loaded for jumping. Really interesting. And we produced a prototype that didn't work exactly as planned and designed, but I know with some improvements and work on the, you know, selecting a spring that was, that would work better, would get them to where they wanted to be.
That's awesome.
Yeah, it was a really clever idea.
Thank you.
I was going to say, thanks for working as a team too.
Yeah.
Being, coming together as a team and bringing your expertise, your own passions, but your own expertise together for the team is huge. So thank you for doing that too. And I think one of our curriculums, we're going to be talking about project-based learning, aren't we? In one of the curriculums we're talking about today. So as this is sitting before me, I'm thinking, well, there we go. There's project-based learning for you.
Mr. Pierce, and that's a, that, every, again, every year that I do this, I'm amazed at how the different students bring different skills, skill sets and abilities to the team. And it's, it's true that, you know, one person can't do it all, that it really requires more than one person.
It's an unmeasurable skill sometimes, but it's so critical. How we all learn to listen over our lives better and listen as a team. So thanks for being part of the team.
And can I just say to you all that what employers are looking for, and I know you're not out in the workforce yet, but what they're looking for are not things you can just Google. They're looking for you to identify problems and to be able to work and think critically about them with other people to solve them. So thank you, Mr. Sharman, for supporting this opportunity. Back in another lifetime in the 90s, when I ran the invention convention for my school, you reminded me, Grace, they used to carry around a bug book and they would write down the things that bugged them and they would try to solve them. And that's just what you did. That was bugging your dad and you came up with a solution. So kudos to all of you for sticking with it. There's a lot of perseverance involved when you're engineering and re-engineering. And your efforts paid off. So congratulations.
And I know Ms. Fraser, she's sitting back there. She's very proud of her teams as well.
And thank you for all the support from Foxborough. It's great to have.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for joining us.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Next on the agenda, this is a, at least a first in our time here, but I love, love, love the idea of having a time in our annual cycle where we recognize parent volunteers and the PTOs that do so much to make the experience for our kids what it is. And so I would like to invite up any members and representatives that want to come up from Burl, Taylor, IGO, the Ahern PAC. And if there's any other groups that are represented here tonight, come on up. Or you can all just come up and stand around the table. That's fine too. The only thing that we do ask is, and this is more just form than anything, is before you speak, just introduce yourself and try to speak into the mic so folks who are watching at home can hear what you have to say. Also, thank you. I get, I'd love to hear from all of you if you're comfortable, unless you have other people who are going to speak on your behalf. But the idea was that we all help the schools in different areas and it would be wonderful just to hear what, what you've been up to. And it gives you all the opportunity to highlight work that you're doing for the community. And really, from my standpoint and everybody on the committee, it gives us a chance to really just say thank you. Would anybody like to share? Please, go ahead.
So my name is Michelle Thaxton and I am the treasurer for the Ahern PAC. Our board consists of our co-presidents, Carrie and Laura Howe, Vice President Monica Fizzler, Secretary Rebecca Kelly, and Board Member-at-Large Karen Share. So thank you to the school committee for allowing us to highlight our accomplishments this year. The Ahern PAC became profit, just nonprofit, just 10 years ago. And we started with a very, very small budget, so we are very proud of what we have done in that time. After this past year of uncertainty with no fundraising, we started off our year strong with our brand new electronic school sign. I hope you all have seen it. We were also able to provide a catered welcome back, welcome back lunch and teacher appreciation lunch for the Ahern staff. Once volunteers were allowed back in the building, we restarted our Helping Hands Committee, which allows volunteers to help teachers with copying and laminating school materials. We invited the school committee candidates to briefly speak, to briefly introduce themselves at our PAC meeting. We have begun the process of having a Gaga pit installed at the Ahern PAC, which allows many kids of all different abilities to play at once. So this is going to be huge because the Ahern PAC has nothing, the Ahern right now does not have much at the playground area. Of course, we are proud of our ability to completely fund all of our, the end of year field trips for all grade levels, five through eight this year, including buses, which is huge. This is not something that we have done before, so we are very proud of this. And new to us this year, we did our first ever eighth grade semi-formal dance held at the school. Big hit. So we are proud of what we have done this past year and we thank the school and Karen Fraser for their assistance, the parents and the community for their support, donations and volunteer. And we thank the school committee for their encouragement and their recognition here tonight. So thank you all.
Hi, my name is Stephanie TuHig and I am the president of the Burl PTO. I am by myself. I don't have anybody else with me representing the PTO tonight. But we do have, all the positions are filled and it's a very active and engaged board that was very well run and our PTO meetings were well attended throughout the year. I'm just going to highlight some of the events that we sponsored this year and talk about them. It's been very busy the past few months with a lot of the field trips and end of year activities. We recently sponsored the fourth grade field day, which was fantastic. I also want to recognize the Foxborough Nutrition Program who hosted a cookout for the kids. Hot dogs, hamburgers, frozen slushies, watermelon. It was fantastic. We got so much positive feedback from the families that they didn't have to pack a lunch and put, you know, ice packs in it. So that was something new, I think, that they started a couple of years ago. I had heard from other parents that they, in the past, they had to pack a lunch and that was a little bit difficult on a hot day to do. So we had a great field day. We also recently sponsored the family picnic. That was a couple of weeks ago. We had a Fenway sausage guy. We had a pizza truck. We had a DJ games. Very well attended event. We also recently started the running club again. This was something that we've historically done every year where we have a volunteer parent who meets the children on Friday and Wednesday mornings for about 45 minutes before school starts. And they are running a 5K this Sunday in Easton on Father's Day. So that's been really exciting. That's attended by third and fourth grade children. We also sponsored the third and fourth grade play Frozen Junior, which was adorable. If anybody saw it, it was my first school play that I've ever attended. Very well done. Dorissa St. Germain led that production and she had help, I know, from her husband and daughter and other parents at the Burl also helped run that and it was just wonderful. And we all got to be together in the brand new gym at the Burl School. If you haven't seen it, it's gorgeous and it was just so exciting to be able to be there for, for the first play in a couple of years. We also sponsored the family dance, which we had a Cinco de Mayo theme. We did that right around May 5th, Cinco de Mayo. And we had some help from Senor Montion with that. She gave us some decorations and some things to hang up in the gym. So that was very well attended. Field trips, we sponsored those. A lot of those happened recently. I know the second graders went to Roger William Sioux and the fourth graders had their end of the year water park adventure at Dedham Health and Athletic Club. One of the highlights of the year is the PTO paid for a book vending machine. I don't know if anybody's been to the Burl, but if you go, it's in the lobby and it is a huge hit. And the teachers do it differently. In my son's class, he's in second grade, it's a rewards based system. So you're nominated by a peer for doing good behavior and following the values of the Burl School, the CARE values. So it is just so exciting. The kids go down as a class. They put their token in, they pick their book and everybody claps. And that has been very well received and it's a great way to promote reading and learning. So that's something that we instituted this year. And just a couple of other things that we sponsored are, we run the Chess Wizards program, which happens on Friday mornings, which the kids love. Beep, which I'm sure all of you have heard about, which is a fantastic enrichment program that has all kinds of activities from slime to dance to kickball. And then we run an annual event in the winter at the Providence Bruins where families can buy a ticket and you get popcorn and a hat. And it's just a way to bring people together from the school. And we also do something similar to what Michelle was saying, cut-ups, which is parents volunteer and they help cut up and prepare and laminate items that they're using in the classroom. And that typically takes place before our monthly PTO meeting. So with that, it's been a great year at the Burl School. It's great to see people in person. I will miss the school next year. I'm not going to be on the board. I'll have my second grader going up to third grade, but I'll have two at the Ahern, so I'm hoping to be more involved in the PAC next year. So thank you for having me. This has been wonderful.
Good evening. I'm Pam Morrison. I'm here representing the Taylor PTO. I feel negative saying this, but, so we've had a bit of, more of a rebuilding year at the Taylor this year. We basically had a brand new board. Three out of four of us have second graders. So this is really like their first normal year. So trying to get people involved, trying to understand what were the norms before COVID. And Mr. Stanton is new to Taylor since COVID as well. So lots of learning together. But the end of the year, definitely things started to pick up and we have more families and parents engaged. And it was, we ended on a great note. So some of the highlights of our year, we, traditionally, there was the spring fling. We switched that to a snowball, which we hosted in February, which included a DJ, a lot of winter based crafts, games, hot chocolate. And it really was like a shockingly, so busy night. Like we walked in and everybody was just shocked with the parking lot, with the families. Everyone was so happy. And everyone was still in masks then, but still, it didn't matter. You could just tell how happy everyone was to be back in the school. So the, some of the other highlights, Mr. Stanton brought in Bren Bataclan, which is an artist that he knows who sends a message about paying it forward with kindness. And he, he hosted assemblies for all the different grades, which everybody loved. We were able to support them updating the teacher's room, which if anyone has ever been at the Taylor, the teacher's lounge was well overdue for an update. So we were able to do a fundraiser to get new cabinets, get some new tables and other decorations in that room. We hosted a teacher's appreciation, appreciation week where there was a different event every day, from gift cards to snack baskets to food truck on the last day of the week. The second grade recently had a field trip to Southwick just yesterday. And the third grade chose to go to Plymouth Plantation. And then we also hosted the family picnic last week, which was very well attended. We had the fire truck with the water hose. We had a snow cone truck. We had a DJ and we had just tons of kids running around, playing soccer and enjoying being with their peers. So it was a great year and we're looking forward to next year.
Hello, my name is Sarah McVeigh. I'm representing the IGO Elementary School. I've been the treasurer and the board the past couple of years. Interesting couple of years. And so I think fortunately, so I have a little bit of my treasure head on, but from an RPTO, fortunately through COVID, a lot of the fundraisers that we weren't able to do just offset by a lot of the things, the other events that we weren't able to do. So we were, have been okay sailing back into, getting into normal this year. I feel like we went from zero to 60 like a month ago with all of the events that have been going on. This year, we've been doing hybrid meetings where we, you know, had all in-person meetings before, went to Zoom over COVID. And so we maintained, we do have most of the attendance in person, but we are still keeping the Zoom option open for those who are unable to attend. And so from a financial perspective, all of the fundraisers, the calendar and the Bit Auction, our biggest fundraisers and some of the other ones did relatively well this year. So that was able to kind of hold up us actually getting through most of our events. So we had the popsicles on the playground to kick off the year. And we had our fall ball in the school and we had gotten kids a Spirit shirt. So that's kind of how we started off the year, but we, we weren't able to do any of the field trips or anything going on in the fall. But then for the second half of the year, we were able to get all of the grades out on a field trip. They were all outside. We've had all of our book fairs. We had the family picnics that they were describing as well. Field days for the K to three at the school. And then we had the Ahern Field Day. We bought the books for the kids for their summer reading. And we had our other books for Bingo's for other kids. We have the fourth grade yearbooks that we paid for for all of the students and are being distributed this week. We had our musical, so our, the, it was Winnie the Pooh this year for our third and fourth graders. And that was, it's kind of separate from the PTO budget, but it is run by the PTO and was, had a really successful year with that, which was, we were glad to get that back in the mix. We had a couple of new things. So we had Greg Moan as an author, which a year ago, he had kind of come in instead of our Richard field trips. He came in and was doing a lot of one-on-ones with the student classes. And so we've maintained that relationship with him. Our principal brought him in. We are in phase one. We're starting to build a school garden at the IGO school. So that will be outside, near the front of the school where the, like kind of next to the kindergarten playground. So really excited about that, getting that started. And our board, we have for next year, so I'll be staying on the board, going into the president position, but all of the board members are existing members from before. So excited to have a full, you know, year kicked off with having all of those things as well. One last thing of the IGO to mention for the IGO PTO. IGO Cares is a unique program we have that falls under the IGO PTO. We get a grant for that and are able to give out gift cards to families. We give out booths, scholarships. At any time families are in need that they go through the counselors and we're able to just provide, you know, gift cards to the grocery stores or gas stations and things like that. So we've been able to maintain that as well through COVID, which is, which is great.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Any questions from the members of the committee? More comments?
I, my comment is only that it's, again, it takes all the different parts working together and, you know, parents and families and being involved in our schools is so, so important to our students' success, to our educators' success and to our community's success. So thank you guys very much for all the work that you're doing and for picking up old and introducing new. Thank you.
Yeah, same, same thing.
That's why I was the first, by the way.
Ditto.
To me, it just, it makes a difference and I, I say it this way all the time because it's the way it comes out. These things aren't always easily measurable, but it makes all the difference in the world. It's why Foxborough is just so great. It's all these little things. You put the time in and it really, it just, I, I, all of our kids have been through it, right? I remember the photos of my daughter in second grade at Burl dancing to the DJ at the family picnic. I still have those photos. It's never left me. It's never left me. So it's just so cool and so appreciative. And I know it can be some headaches, but I hope at the end of the day, when you sit and reflect, because that's what you're doing for us, it, it just, just lights up and it just makes a difference. So thanks for being shining lights and leaders, really. Thank you so much.
I'll add before, and I'll let you conclude, but I just wanted to, I wanted to say that, piggybacking off what they said, I've worked in a lot of different districts and I've worked in districts where, as an educator, you fear to pitch something because you know it's going to negatively impact kids financially. And it really does limit your options when it comes to field trips and things of that nature, especially buses. So I'm, I'm very grateful to have landed in a community where there's so many people that pour out their time and support so that kids get to have these amazing experiences and it's seamless. And so I'm very grateful for that. And also, you mentioned Pam, the, the chunk of time where it wasn't business as usual. And that hits all kinds of boards, especially volunteer organizations, really, really hard in terms of institutional memory. And what do the kids do and, you know, the, our, our school administration, teachers, parents, everybody kind of struggles with that. Because you take a couple of years off this stuff and all of a sudden you turn around and you forget, wait, did we actually used to do that? What do we do? You know, what are we supposed to do? And it, it, so much relies on that. And so I just want to say thank you to everybody on current and recent boards and upcoming boards for keeping that gap and really just contributing to the learning so that we can keep these new traditions coming and old traditions going. Ms. Lannoy?
So this hits close to home for me. I spent a long time at the IGO and at the Ahern on boards. And this is not usually done by school committee member, but I have been asked to read this because of my time at the Ahern PAC. So whereas we are here to recognize, sorry, I'm just going to say I'm going to read this. I'll get emotional if I don't just read it off the paper. So whereas we are here to recognize all of the hardworking parents, PACs and PTOs that support our schools. There is one person who stands out and always stands up. She has been a fixture of the PTO scene for 15 years, starting as a room parent, a role I'm pretty sure she has held each year since, between the Burl and the Ahern, Michelle Thaxton. Thaxton, has held a PTO or pack board position for at least 10 years. We've tried to do the math, Michelle.
It's 12.
It's 12. I knew you'd know, I'm correcting. The majority of her time has been spent as treasurer, consistently and mindfully watching our cash flow and expenses. She ensures we dutifully and legally fulfill our responsibilities and is quick to let us know what we can afford, for sure. She has handled many BAT auctions and carnivals, which are complicated to reconcile. She has the full trust of the boards and the parents. Michelle is also a founding and current member of our CPAC, working with Student Services and always there to support parents as they seek resources and care for kids and their complex needs. But it isn't just her time and efforts we admire. Michelle is one of the most consistent, dependable, and knowledgeable parents we have. We have to refer to her as the PTO pack historian. She doesn't say no. She is responsive to every request, and she always does what she says she will do. She was recently recognized as, we are sad to see Michelle leave this role, but look forward to her next phase and how she will positively impact our community for years to come.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Sorry.
Well, thank you so much for representing, and thank you for all the work that you have been doing and continue to do. We really, really appreciate it. Our kids appreciate it, so thank you.
Foxborough is really, truly lucky to have all of you. Thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all. That was awesome. You guys must be really tired. Go home and take a nap.
The word "wow" is what continues to come to my mind.
If you want to review some curriculum, where you can hang out.
Thank you all very much.
They've earned that walk out the door.
Yeah, they definitely earned the walk out the door.
They've worked really hard.
Sign up for subbing. That's right.
Next on the agenda, we have an item returning this week that we had set up previously and decided to move it to this evening. It's the annual FHS Guidance Services Update. So I'd like to invite up our guests and say thank you for being here. And thank you, and thank you for rescheduling. This is good.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I was talking with Dr. Burdos today, and I am not going to even come close to doing justice for this report. I really do wish that Lorian was here, but circumstances do not allow her to be here. But I think, as all of you know, we are very fortunate, and again, thank you to the school committee for supporting us in this way, that we've got a phenomenal guidance department and services that we're really able to provide for our students. So I do want to preface with that, you do have a report. I am going to go through this just a little bit with you, and so our folks at home can also hear a little bit about some of the things that we have and that we have been doing. But guidance is really about the whole student and what we can do to really prepare our students for lifelong skills, and not just what they're going to do while in school and having those grow through four years of ninth, 10th, and 11th and 12th grade, but what they can take with them when they leave us after they graduate. So one of the programs that we're really happy to have, and so many schools are utilizing it, is Naviance. And that is really an online housing mechanism for our students and for our parents as far as taking a look at colleges, doing the college exploration, being able to upload letters of recommendation, being able to hit a button and push send to colleges and universities. It just has a multitude of abilities within it that are just so much better than days gone by when, you know, everything was by hand, and do we have, and do you have, and do we have the three letters in there, and is it all there? But you can just, it takes care of everything. It's that online filing system and sending off. And parents can access it as well, and the students, it's one of the first things that the students really do learn about when they come to the high school and how they can move forward and utilize that as they continue to grow their academic and their co-curricular resume, you know, as a student at the school.
Ms. Lannoy?
I was going to ask, I should have asked at the beginning. Do you prefer, if folks have a question, to storm up till the end, or?
You can, and I'll really try to answer as best as I can. You can jump in whenever you would like.
No, it's more, I was just, your personal preference, since.
Whatever you would like.
Since you're the one doing the work here.
Nope, just go ahead and jump in whenever you would like. I'm good with that.
Can I ask a question on Naviance? Is that also where the, with Naviance, is that where they do the recommendations as well?
Yes, recommendations can be right uploaded right into Naviance.
Oh, cool. Thank you.
Which is awesome, so everything can go at once. It's like literally push the button, and a transcript can go, your letters of recommendation can go, the application goes, the common app. Some schools, you know, you're not necessarily sending through a common app. You have to do that on their own online piece, but Naviance is still the housing mechanism for it to be able to send. Yeah, it's phenomenal. It's phenomenal. So then, kind of, I'm flipping now into our transition from our middle school to our high school. And as a matter of fact, last week, we actually did have our step-up day for our eighth graders to come to the high school. We had our Link Crew and NHS students who helped to facilitate tours of the building. They met with both Mr. Servideo and Ms. Sylvia, our current assistant principals, and myself. They met with our athletic director. They met with students to talk a little bit about athletics and to also talk about the co-curricular activities that are available to our students within the building. They came back to the auditorium, and then they were able to go and experience lunch at the high school, which is a little bit different, I think, in as far as open seating and, you know, where the lunch lines are, so at least to introduce the kids so that they can see what it is when they come in September that they're going to be experiencing. But it doesn't just end there. That, that next step is come late August, early September, we have an orientation program with our Link Crew. We've been very fortunate to have, I would say, probably about 95% of our incoming ninth graders come to the Link Crew orientation, which is a great day because the kids, the incoming ninth graders are able to, again, come in, they receive their schedule, they're able to walk through their schedule, find out where their locker is, even though nobody uses lockers anymore, but find out where they're going to go to that first morning, you know, that trepidation of what do I do and how do I do it? And again, meet with upperclassmen, kind of big sisters, big brothers for them. And it's a great day. It's a really good day. Meet some teachers. We usually have a clap-in for them, which is pretty awesome, and to the auditorium and to meet staff. So, so that's kind of that particular day. There are other things that go along as students are preparing for the incoming ninth grade in particular, but as they're preparing for choosing their courses for next year. So our guidance department does go to the middle school and does meet with the students, both in large group and then smaller group, in conjunction with the guidance department at the middle school. And then, of course, with parents selecting what courses they're going to be taking for the following year. So just a variety of different programs that do happen kind of throughout the year, but seems to always be kind of front-loaded in the spring, because of course, that's the closest to coming to the high school at that time. We also do have, as far as additional support for our students, we do have, which we're so grateful for, some of this currently being taken care of by grant money, which is awesome, but we do have our tutors, our tutors at the high school. And with COVID, we were actually able to increase our math tutor from a part-time individual to a full-time individual. Our English teacher, or, excuse me, our English tutor is still a part-time tutor. But we also have an additional tutor, an organizational tutor, that we put into place last year, including last year putting in the math tutor full-time. But the organizational tutor is just really there for organization, but also helping students, how can you make a calendar? What's do, what's next? How do you do? What, what's your bookbag look like? You know, what does your notebook look like? And you don't have to have an IEP, a 504, or anything else that might be attached where you are, getting some of those services built in. The individual who's there is available every day. Some students are assigned to go during a given study period, and for other students, it's a drop-in for them. But it's a wonderful, really, an opportunity that we were able to start last year. It's continued this year, and it will continue again next year. Once again, we all know the social, emotional needs of our students and the mental wellness that we really need to work on, not just here, not just Massachusetts, it's across the country, it's really, it's across the world, for what we're, you know, dealing with as we continue to build from the 18 months of kind of chaos that we were all living in for a while there. So that's been, that's been awesome. And again, you know, I'm hoping going forward, hopefully those grants will continue. If not, I know, again, I just thank you all because I know you've always been so supportive of what we need for our students to be able to do the best that we possibly can. And then, of course, guidance is always trying to communicate with parents in whatever way possible, usually around the grading, grading time, if there's any students that are struggling, they're in contact. Hopefully, teachers have been prior to that. But just a variety of different events, too, that they wind up putting on throughout the school year, and different things that get mailed out, and a lot of different communication that takes place with them as well. Scheduling, a little bit about scheduling. Our scheduling begins January, February, and our guidance department winds up going into classes. We usually select a given department so that we're not impacting the same. It's not all English classes. It might be English and math and history, but going in to speak to the students at grades nine, 10, 11, and 12, to talk about those pathways, taking a look at what the next areas would be. The students, along with parents, you're selecting those courses. It's an online piece. Guidance department meets with all of the students to say, this, these are all the things that you've selected. Let's take a look. What's the direction you're going into? Are you sure you want to go in this direction? We also have curriculum nights that are held, particularly for AP courses, where our teachers are there as well, to be able to have those conversations, to say, yes, this is what the expectations are, this is what you would need to do for, for these particular classes, so that students know going in what it is that they would be having. And then, again, that procedure continues through really till now, and we're tweaking schedules this week as we speak. And guidance is continuing to meet with some students, just because they're, sometimes we do wind up with those, oh, no, I really don't want to take that class, could I put this one in? But then it's a matter of, is there room in the class? Does it fit in the schedule? We're a smaller school, so in some cases, we have singletons, and sometimes, singletons can cross on top of each other, so then a decision has to be made as far as which class the student will wind up taking. So that's well in the works as we speak. So what else? Oh, career counseling, our college counseling, once again, to be able to have a college counselor available to our students and to our families, and working among the guidance staff is just absolutely incredible. Last year, Bruce Hamilton moved from our part-time counselor. He had joined us a few years back, and he slid into the role that Joe O'Neill had had for a good number of years when Joe finally retired, retired, retired again. And Bruce has stepped in as, as you're shaking your head, and, I know, it's amazing, isn't it, Richard?
When did he retire? Charlie, Joe?
A year ago, fall. A year ago, yeah. A year ago this past fall, so.
That was like 20 years beyond retirement.
Absolutely, beyond his own, yes. When I was in a prior district, he was the director of guidance there.
He was there, and he came here.
Yeah, he'd retired and unretired.
And then, yeah, I'll do that for 20 more years.
Right, and did that. But again, just Bruce is so knowledgeable, too, on colleges and steering kids in the right direction, and, and to have a college counselor, and again, the, really, the schedule that's been established is that juniors somewhat in the spring of their junior year can set up those appointments with Mr. O'Neill. You can do it sooner, but he's usually working with the seniors. So now these juniors now, in the spring, setting up those appointments as they're now the rising seniors, also meeting over the summer. There are summertime hours that are, that happen as well. He walks students through, and they can come right in and sit down at the computer as far as setting up and filling out their common application and working through other applications at the schools as well, and really getting a good handle, because we all know what it's like. It's senior year, it's the fall of senior year. You've got a whole plethora of classes that you're taking, some, in some cases, extremely challenging for students, and that's the last thing you want to have loaded right on top. So if some of that can get done during the summer, that's awesome to have that happen. But again, he continues that same thing through, right through the, the fall semester, and then we start that whole process all over again to, was that a?
No, no, no.
Okay, I wasn't sure if that was something on that thread, so.
Empathizing.
But definitely just, we're, again, so fortunate to be able to have him, and couldn't be happier that we're able to continue with this particular offering for our families and for our students as well. And again, we do have our college nights and our financial nights, too, where we do have folks who come out, who are experts out there, to come in to talk to parents about what it is to, to fill out that FASAF form and other forms that are so necessary if you're looking for additional college aid for students. And again, having admissions officers who will come in and talk to students and talk to families about what they're looking for and what those needs are. We have a variety, I'm jumping, and I'm going kind of quick here, but we also have a variety of scholarships that are open and available for our students. Guidance continuously posts. We get national scholarships in all the time, so they'll get that information out to students. Here's one that comes up, and whatever it might be, see if you'd like to apply for it. And then, of course, you know, we've also got just the scholarships that the town has been so generous with. It's incredible. So there's a, a listing of all of those in the, in the back of the summary that Lorian's provided, and I think the number was, I think it's 55 from the community, 55 scholarships from the community just this past year. But that doesn't include the fact that many of those scholarships, it's more than one student who can receive them. So it's not just 55 students, it's 55-plus students, but the scholarship number at this point is 55. And those can fluctuate a little bit. You know, we've had some scholarships that have been with us for a couple of years, or somebody will come in and say, we'd like to do this for a few years, and then it, it winds up coming out, and something else winds up coming in again. So once again, just that, that generosity of the community is incredible. Guidance is also involved, too, as far as the whole child is concerned, not only do they meet with students individually, but we also have a weekly SWAT team that meets, and it's our Student Wellness Assistance Team, that includes our, our guidance counselors, our social worker, our school psychologist, the nurse, the administration, who get together to meet about students who are of concern. A notice goes out to our, all of our teachers, is there anybody that you're worried about, concerned about? You've seen a drop in grades, whatever it might wind up being, that people can send that forward then to the, to Marie Foley usually is the person who is the outreach social worker for that, and, and then there's a discussion of what is happening. You know, it could be the academics, it could be something else that's happening. Health-wise, it could be, it could be any number of things, but it's really wraparound services for the student. What's in their best interest? What kind of a plan can we make? And how's that going to be followed through on? And any contacting of parents, back and forth with parents as well with that, too. So individual counseling, I mentioned, the financial literacy piece of it. Oh, our, our credit for life this year shifted a little bit. Ellen Pillsbury, who is fabulous in, in that career counseling position, she reached out because with COVID, early on in the year, this takes so much planning to do any of these events, and we had so many people early in the year just saying we can't commit to it because we just don't know what direction this is going to go into. So she did a lot of research, and she found a couple of schools and a couple of places that had done online. And so we always are borrowing from each other, which is a great thing to do. So it was actually an online event for our seniors this year, which was kind of cool. It wasn't still the same, wasn't the same impact, but it still had the same outcome as in, yes, things, this is a cost, here are expenses, here's what, you know, you've got as an income, and how are you going to make it all work? And so we did have good feedback on it, but we are truly hoping next year that we'll be right back into having this as a live event as well.
Sure.
So that's the major hope. And then our life choices was somewhat in combination with the online for this, and this is something that guidance in the wellness department really had put together, probably, it was pre-COVID, so it's, we're probably in our fourth year of it. And it's where we brought in individuals to say, life past high school, you're going to be encountering some things, and you really need to make some good, healthy choices on it, and you really need some skills. So we actually, at one point, not this year, but in years prior, we had a person in for self-defense. Somebody lunges at you, how do you get out of that? You know, and how do you make your way out of it? We've had the police come in to talk about, actually, Val, I think, actually had come in, to talk about online, and what does it look like? And you think you're putting something out, and again, you think it's private, and walks the students right through it, and lo and behold, they find out that what they thought was private really isn't private. So just those kinds of skills, even though they keep hearing these things about what those kinds of skills, even though they keep hearing these things about what you do put online, and it never goes away and all of that, but don't always think that because things are private or done in a certain way, that that's how they're going to wind up going. Talking about dorm room safety, you know, if you decide that you are going to go on to college, how can you be sure that you're keeping a passport, if you have it, or your license secure, or whatever it might be, and what are some precautions you can take in a dorm room? Because unfortunately, I just know for my own two daughters, they're not always locking their door. Like, are you kidding me? You need to have your door locked all the time in your dorm, but that's a whole other conversation to be had. And of course, guidance also spearheads our MCAS testing, our ACTs, our SATs, and all of the testing that we do with in-school and out-of-school. And as I had mentioned earlier, their communication tools that they do use to have this go out. And I know sometimes folks will say, oh, I didn't get, I didn't receive. I would say, please give a call to us. We had one person who didn't receive a recent email that went out, and we can check those, because when we send the email blast, it'll tell us whether it was received. And it actually, it was blocked. And that particular family, that parent didn't realize. The other parent had received it, but this parent hadn't and didn't realize that they had put the block on. That's on their side, that they had blocked, actually, for whatever reason, this coming in. So again, just those kinds of things that we can usually rectify. There's usually, you know, a way to rectify. So again, they do, we do have our students and our parents that have access to Power School, so always at the ready. We've got email, the email blasts that we do send out as well, school mailings, phone calls, parent conferences, teacher conferences, the electronic report cards that we do, the local newspaper articles at times that are put in, and then the evening student-parent presentations, where, again, there's a program of studies night, which is open to any students, grades eight through 11, our college admissions night, our college admission panel night, which is a different evening, the AP potential night, and the AP open house. So some of the evening, as well as others that come along pre-COVID, and we'll be putting those back in again. So the, they had also, guidance had also highlighted in here, each of the programs through grades nine, 10, 11, and 12. I'm going to save that and skip through because there are a variety of different things in there, and that's accessible online if anybody would like to take a look for a direction for that to go into. A little bit about our school to career, and again, Ellen is our highlight person who mans all of the above. They did do this year, they did have a virtual Future Educators Day at Bridgewater State. Usually, that's a tour, but in this case, it happened to be virtual. And the one thing that we were very excited about to be able to have this year once again, was that Senior Project was back in and back on, and we were thrilled. Our number was at 32. We know that that's going to continue to go up. Again, we're coming off a COVID year, and so just really glad that that was able to go. And what the students did, I was able to sit in on several of their presentations, and it was really phenomenal. We love to get their feedback on it. Sometimes I love what I did, and sometimes I didn't love what I did, but it's okay because I know now that I don't want to do X, Y, or Z. And we always just say, it doesn't need to be a career that you want to go into. Maybe it's just something you have an interest in, and this is an opportunity for you to be able to try out that interest. So the Credit for Life Fair, I've already mentioned that one. And oh, there's a teacher apprentice program that we do actually at the IGO, where our students do actually walk over to the IGO, and they are attached with a teacher there. And that's been ongoing for a good, good number of years. Several different, you know, future projects, again, future nurses, things like that, that again, we're hoping will be back in now that COVID has somewhat settled itself down quite a bit. There's always, again, the career exploration that winds up taking place and job shadowing that we've had students do as well on it. The last part of what's in the packet that you all have, you've got our school profile, which we update every year, goes out to colleges as well, a sample, letter of recommendation that was written, a sample of the Common App that is in, and then the breakdown of our students as they've matriculated, going back 10 years, 11 years here. And I'm very happy to say that 93% of our students have gone on to education beyond high school. So that breakdown, you can see that we've got 80% at a four-year, and we have 13% at a two-year. But we also have a percentage of students that may well go on to a professional school after that as well. So again, with our students continuing on, the next page after that one actually does do a little bit more of a breakdown with students who are attending the specialized schools in trade, cosmetology, paramedics, and our students who are entering the military. We had two students this year who chose to enter, our students who are entering the workforce, and our students who may decide to take a gap year. And we did have a student who did decide to do that this year as well, too.
How do you code somebody who's doing an apprenticeship? Does that go under work or education, or depends on what they're doing?
If it's an apprenticeship during the school year, then it just, it's under school. It wouldn't count in any of the numbers on, are you looking at this one?
Yeah, yeah.
Which one am I looking at?
No, I was just wondering, like, if a kid who is going to go on be, you know, and look to pursue, like, electrical work or something like that.
Oh, that would then go under, under a specialized school, the paramedic, the cosmetology, the trade.
Trade, I missed that. Thank you so much.
And we did, we had, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but we did have students who were accepted into both electrical as well as plumbing, which is, it's a feat to be accepted in. You do have to jump hoops, most definitely, to go in. And I'll be hiring them soon, so that's what I've said.
Right, exactly.
When we're finished, I need the number because we could be using you. And then just some scatter plots showing application and acceptance rates of students at a few of the universities in the area for us. So I'll try to answer whatever questions you may have. I hope I've done them some justice, but again, I, you know, we thank you all truly for supporting all that we do, and in particular, what we're able to do for kids beyond just the academics. And that's what this is, and that's what's so important.
Questions and comments from the committee?
I'm not a question asker tonight, just a comment. What I appreciate about the guidance department is how central they are to the student's experience. I don't, until I had students at the high school, I did not appreciate that. But I think it's remarkable that, again, we have an environment where guidance is so participative in the entire experience from eighth grade, as they're transitioning into the high school, and for many of them post, you know, post, post 12th grade. So very much appreciated and looking forward to, you know, how that, the guidance is going to evolve with new leadership. And, you know, thank Laurence and that team for all the work that they've done with your support. But excited to see what happens as well. So that's my only comment.
Thank you. I just wanted to add one more thing for you all. We did not have any new courses that we brought forward for you all for approval, but we did have four that you approved from last year.
Right.
So I just want to give you a little bit of an update. So those four were social justice, sports media, sports and society, and event planning. So again, it's always, will students select on those? And so last year for this year, we did run three out of the four. The one that didn't run this year, this past school year, was event planning, just again, how students decided to select or elect. However, going forward, all four of those will be electives for this coming school year. So we're very excited about that as well. And the social justice, I know, Mr. Canfield, I saw you at their presentation, but they did a presentation as a final project at the Orpheum a couple of weeks back, and really powerful, powerful stuff.
It was amazing. It was absolutely amazing.
Yes. So again, we've got great kids, and again, thank you for your support. We really appreciate it. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is revisiting the superintendent evaluation. And we, this was, again, to recap for those here and those at home. We had a formal presentation from Dr. Verdos during our last meeting, last Wednesday, and we put it on the agenda again just to, as a moment where people can ask clarifying questions, anything that may have come up, and that we wanted to put out in an open meeting. So with that, would any members have any questions or comments at this time? And I would know as well, but I will remind ourselves and anybody else that I believe we'll be collecting evaluations through the 29th of June of this month, and then having them ready to go back out to you all. Thank you. And also a reminder to all members, if we haven't yet, please set a meeting with Amy to discuss. It's also a reminder for myself.
Mr. Chair?
Please.
The one thing I wanted to know, and this is a housekeeping item, but I think we had talked about doing the word, sending around the Word evaluation so that we could, when you go to compile everything.
Yes, thank you. I will.
In the Word format to make it easier for you.
So we can type and not, yes, type and compile.
Has that been sent out? I think that's your question. Do we have the Word?
That's my question. Do we have that?
Do we have the Word?
It has not been sent out. I will send it to the chair and, or send it to Janet, and Janet can send it.
No, then I'll get it out to you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Jan.
Thank you.
Excellent. Moving on. Welcome to anybody who would like to discuss the English Language Arts Curriculum Review. Invite anybody to come forward who wants to talk about this juicy document here. And when you're, so just whoever wants to come up and talk about that, I'll remind folks coming up, please say your name and move the mic so folks at home can hear your dulcet tones.
Well, may I introduce them? Is that okay, Mr. Chair?
Please.
So I'm very excited to welcome to the table our co-chairs of the ELA Curriculum Review. And we have Dr. Shannon Wazlowski, who is our English Department Head at Foxborough High School, and Mrs. Karen McKinnon. She is our ELA Social Studies Title I Curriculum Director, K through 8. They have run a very comprehensive review, I'm sure, as you can see from that report, of our English Language Arts Curriculum. And we had some unforeseen challenges this year in running this review. And I think it's remarkable that we are here on June 14th, and it's done. So congratulations. And I'd also like to thank members of the team who are here. I think they will be doing that, so I will allow them. But thank you for being here this evening as well. It's been a long year, and it's, it's late, so thank you for being here. I will, with that, I will, I will just say actually one more thing. We have two curriculum reviews tonight that we're going to be hearing about, visual arts and ELA. We try to create some structure around the curriculum review in terms of how you receive it. So we've sort of codified the way we have our template, so you'll notice that there's a lot more consistency in the presentations that you'll be seeing, and also in terms of the report, so that when you receive this information annually, it will be as consistent as it can be. There'll certainly be the flavor of the style of the person or the people who are creating the documents, but it should be a little bit more systematic in our approach to how we do it. We've also added some new rubrics and things that you may hear about this evening in terms of looking through things in, through our DEI lens and some other, some other, just additions to the process. So without further ado, I will turn it over to you.
I'm sorry, before you guys start, I just have to, because I'm amazed by this innovation that at 57 years old, I've never noticed in my life before, the stapling of this in the lower right-hand corner. It is, absolutely, because it unfolds perfectly. So whoever came up with that, I was at first going to like make, give Janet a hard time for stapling it in the wrong corner.
It's now the wrong corner.
Oh, my Lord. It's life-changing. This is a life-changing thing for me.
I remember to do that again.
Thank you. So I'm so apologize, but if this is what we're in for, this is really exciting.
Stapling innovations go before curriculum review.
Point of clarification for everyone here, right? This, and I'll remind the committee, this is an action item, so we vote on this at the end to approve.
Stapling?
I don't, no, we don't have that power, thankfully.
I will say, as an outcome of a curriculum review, at times, there are purchases that are related to curriculum, and so those are the ones that go before school committee, and that's what you'll be receiving in action item on this evening.
Thank you.
Yes, you also have a very lengthy report, and these slides are just the most salient points so that we can be as succinct as possible in sharing everything that they do.
We did our best.
Yes.
I'm just going to start quick, and I just wanted to thank Dr. Mello and Dr. Wazlowski for standing in for me. I was the unforeseen circumstance that happened this year, and I had to take a four-month medical leave. So they were wonderful, as was everyone here in Foxborough, to really help me as I recovered from brain surgery. So I'm doing great and really appreciate them for stepping in for me while I was out, as well as the members of the committee, who, there's a lot of people, Scott Walker, Deb Phillips, Rita Anas, Sharon Roberts, and Wendy Smith, who are here, as well as Karen Fraser and Mike Stanton, who are part of the committee. So thank you to all of them.
So happy to have you back.
Good to be back, for sure.
Well, thank you for being here.
Yes.
And it has been wonderful to work with Karen, I have to say. This is our first partnership, and I hope it's the first of many.
Me, too.
So I'm going to take you through the overview of the process. So we started.
Remember the window.
So the first thing we did was, we reviewed the previous report, and we will go on into detail on some of these, so I'll just briefly review them.
Sure.
So we reviewed the previous report. That's where we started. Next, we developed our focus questions. We took those focus questions, and we used those to help us establish our goals for our review. With the goals in mind, we took a look at the available research. So we took a look at educational literature. We use the curriculum frameworks to see what's out there and what our best practices were. We collected our own data. We distributed surveys to all of the ELA teachers in the district, K through 12. And we summarized our findings, and we turned those findings into our recommendations. So like I said, we'll go through those in a little bit more depth as we go through the report.
All right. All right. So we started off with sample, creating sample focus questions, and really, this was about the committee trying to be really curious as we started to consider all the current ELA practices. Our questions were developed around four areas. So first one was curriculum, instruction, assessment, and professional development. The, oops, I'm not pointing in the right direction. There we go. There's a complete list on page three of your report, so you can see all of those. We didn't feel the need to go ahead and read those, but spent a lot of time here focused on developing these questions. And then the focus questions are what really led us to develop our goals. And our goals were around the same areas, curriculum instruction, assessment, and professional development. These goals around these four areas led us to decide on our research and helped us develop our questions for our surveys. And you can see the full set of sample goals, and those are on pages four and five in the full report.
Yeah, I would, I would say, one of the strengths of our curriculum review process, I think, is the structure of the process. So from looking at the old report, we were able to generate those questions, and you can see how tightly linked our focus questions are to the goals that we developed. So I think that's one of the strengths of the curriculum review process.
And if you have any questions that come up in the midst of all this, feel free to not.
You can share the goals. I think you could go through them just quickly, just so that, because they will, they're right on the screen up there.
It's just a little sampling of them.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, so the full, there's, as you can see on page four and five, there's a whole bunch of goals broken up by the elementary, middle school, and then the high school in those four different areas. So we spent a lot of time really in this front-loading, this work, to really be able to drive us forward as we move through the process. So once we had the questions, that's really what brought us then to research, and that helped us decide on what research we were going to pursue, armed with this research from high-quality instructional materials that the state has put out, their recommendations, thinking about diversity and equity, and how that is incorporated into the practices in English Language Arts. Then we went on and developed surveys based on our research and based on the focus questions and goals that we had established. Some of the surveys, questions that we developed were around the Massachusetts Frameworks and teachers' knowledge and understanding of those, as well as the current Foxborough Public Schools documents that are available to teachers. We asked them to share with us the resources that they're currently using in reading and writing. For the elementary, K to three, we asked a whole series of questions about foundations and Word study, the phonics, which is a lot of research out there right now about the science of reading and how we approach that instruction at the elementary level. We wanted teacher feedback on student experience and their instructional practice, as well as their professional development. And then on the surveys, we finally asked them to share with us any current challenges that they're facing in terms of their literacy instruction, as well as any other information that they felt as though would help inform the work that the committee was doing. The responses were amazing, super thoughtful. Teachers really took a lot of time in the open response questions, which was really helpful for us, you know, having a relatively small committee from the elementary and the middle school. We really leaned into their survey data because we want this to be really representative of everyone, even though there was just a small number of people that were actually participating in the monthly meetings. So the data, in addition to the surveys, we did look at MCAS data and other in-house data that we have, our Fastbridge Universal Screener, to kind of help us as we move through. And I know that Shannon will talk about the high school data, too. But so the elementary data, this is just, there's a couple of snips in your report about different questions that we asked them, and this was one of them, about writing. If I have enough resources to provide students adequate instruction in writing, and you see the yellow and the blue would be disagree or strongly disagree, and that's something that really stood out to us across the board. And a lot of things that we saw was that writing was a real, definitely, area of need for teachers. We then looked at some MCAS data. This is a little bit small, but this shows the 2019 grade-three MCAS data. And what it's showing here is that we're just a little bit below the state in terms of our writing. And so again, that's something that we'd like to really work on in, you know, improving that. And then anecdotally, some of the open response questions, teachers would say things like, I don't have enough time to model writing lessons every day for the kids. There's not enough specific lessons given to us to teach writing. And then the other big, consistent piece that came across for elementary was more, time needs to be spent on phonics and Word study, especially reteaching some lagging skills. So those are some big things that came out of the elementary. For the middle school, again, looking at that MCAS data and being a little bit below the below the state once again. And then our survey data, writing, and especially the area of grammar, came up a lot with the middle school and having a need to have a little bit more of a structured support in that grammar, something like phonics that's sequential, that builds one on the next. And so if there's gaps and holes, and, you know, seventh grade teachers get their students, and yet, some of them don't have the skills intact that they really needed to get in fourth or fifth grade. So looking at trying to shore that up a little bit. And then some of the open responses. John Collins is a writing program that was used for many, many years in the district, and a lot of people were feeling at this point, it was ineffective. And same thing with Lucy Hawkins, it's something that had been used and wasn't really providing enough of a structure for teachers. And then other challenges, again, the grammar instruction. And then another thing that came up was common assessments based on standards, and that we didn't have enough standards-based lessons kind of readily available for everyone to access. So those were the kind of elementary and middle school findings.
So if you look at the goals for the high school part of the review, you'll see that a big focus of our goals was student engagement and building authentic skills and taking a look at what, what we do, how we do it, and are we doing it well. So some of the data that we collected, we collected some vocal data, that's a survey that's put out, it's a student survey put out by DUCY. And it really looks at, or it asks questions about education through the lens of school climate. So it looks at student engagement, it looks at student safety, and it looks at how students perceive their learning environments. So we took a look at that data. Too many buttons. We also, at the high school, are engaged in the Niask review process.
Lucky.
And so, lucky, lucky us. So part of that was, we recently gave out the student survey for the self-reflection report, and so we were able to actually use that data. So we took a look at that. We also, wrong button again. I should be better at this. I do this on a regular basis.
You're doing it backwards, though.
Over the shoulder, over the shoulder. We also did a survey for our teachers, and we focused on a lot of building authentic skills and student engagement, which circles around our PBL. So we do project-based learning in the 11th grade, we've done that for a couple of years, fully integrated into the 11th grade curriculum. And so a lot of our questions were around project-based learning. We have units in all of our curriculum at all levels. So a lot of our questions were, how comfortable are you with it? Do you need assistance? Do you feel comfortable with the planning, the instruction, the assessment? So a lot of our data came from those surveys as well.
Point of clarification, when the, with the faculty surveys, was it focusing on your ELA teachers at the secondary, or was it across?
So we did surveys across the board, but
We did too.
Your surveys were different from my surveys.
Yeah, every, every
That makes sense.
Yeah, every level was a little bit different. But at the middle school, we did incorporate also the content area teachers, science, social studies.
At the high school, you did not, right? It was just English department?
Right, it was just, yeah, it was just English teachers at the high school.
Thank you.
And then we also took a look at research surrounding project-based learning, surrounding engaging students in choice, having a lot of student voice and choice to increase our engagement and to increase the types of texts that we offer to them.
So the next phase was kind of looking at all of the research that we had gathered and trying to find some strings of consistency through. So we developed lists of positive findings that then led us to the identified needs. I would say that the first thing that came out is that good news that there's a lot of great things happening in ELA in Foxborough, grades K to eight. So that's a great place to start. You'll see some of the positive findings listed on the left, foundations being one of them at the elementary school, that is our phonics program for K to two. There's a few things that we need to work on in terms of consistency and fidelity, but teachers really seem to feel strongly about the language and the understanding and the process of teaching kids phonics. The middle school, just quickly, some of the positive things, and then the identified needs, common assessments, an articulated scope and sequence for, especially for writing. Four big things kind of came out of this as, as we grappled with the survey data. There was a lot of information and a lot of things that we learned through research, but four big ideas kind of continued to emerge, and that was one, writing. We really have a need for a different approach, more structured approach to writing than we've had, that John Collins, like I said, it kind of served its purpose in its time. And then the Lucy Hawkins, that some people dabbled in, didn't really seem to be fitting the bill. So the writing K to eight is something that really came out. The other piece that came out strong was the need for some more consistency in the phonics and some phonemic awareness in kindergarten and first grade. So those are two big things. And then in general, consistency and alignment. Consistency horizontally across the elementary schools, and then also really looking at the vertical alignment as we transitioned from three elementary schools into one middle school. So those four ideas really drove us as we considered what to do and as we thought about how to get to our recommendations. I'll let, talk about her findings and needs, and then I'll talk more about recommendations.
So for curriculum, we found that we have really made a good start in centering student voices in our classrooms, but we found that we have some, some work to do to continue to that, to do that. We also found that we need to increase the variety of texts that we offer to our students so that we can make sure that they see not only themselves, but others through the texts that they read. So that was kind of the biggest finding that we had. And then we also found that we need some training for everyone. Some of our teachers have been fortunate enough to do some PBL training, but not everyone has. So that was one of the big findings, is that we need to have some comprehensive training for PBL for all of our teachers, so we can continue that process.
So then our, our next step in the process was trying to think about, well, what are we, where are we gonna go from here? So we have all this information, we have our findings, we have our identified needs, and how are we gonna work to meet some of these needs? So as a K to eight committee, we got together and we looked at different materials that are available in terms of literacy. We, I got tons of samples of things, my office right now is stacked with materials from different vendors, and we spent a lot of time really looking through them and thinking about the survey responses and the direction that we should go, and thinking about all of the things that the state is now saying about high-quality instructional material and the importance of that for the, especially the elementary, elementary grades. So we decided to bring in two different vendors, three different vendors, to talk with us about materials. And so we brought in a company called Common Lit, we brought in Empowering Writers, and then we brought in the People for Center for Collaborative Classroom. So three different kinds of venues to look at. We invited people from all throughout K to eight to come and join on the vendor day and to hear the presentations by the vendors. And it became very clear at the middle school level, the direction to go in, that they, they felt confident recommending for them to pursue Empowering Writers as our writing program, and then to look at Common Lit as the program that we would use to support our reading and our units of study. And then elementary was a little bit more of a challenge, and we grappled a lot. We actually invited two of the vendors back for a second day to really get some questions answered and figure out the right direction to go to. And ultimately, we leaned back into those big four ideas about writing, and then, well, three of them, writing consistency and alignment, and we decided to go Empowering Writers K to eight. So this will give us that horizontal and that vertical consistency in a, in a writing program. And so we are hoping to move forward with the adoption of that for, for K to eight. I think Dr. Mello put together the
You wanna push the buttons?
Yep.
Sorry, didn't show you.
So this is just a snippet of the beginning, but Adopting GOEDs. So that, that's a decodable text series that supports foundations. We looked a lot at, the state has a website called Curate that reviews high-quality instructional material, and then also, the state encourages to look at ed reports. And so foundations has been reviewed on ed reports, and there's a few areas that it just falls a little bit short on. One of them is this connected text or the reading of this decodable text. And so that's what the purchase of GOEDs will do for us. It's aligned to foundations and will allow our teachers to continue to support kids in the solidification of the learning of their phonics skills by having text to read that really is gonna be supportive of that. Hegarty is a phonemic awareness curriculum that we're gonna try and use with our K and first-grade kids. And then we're gonna extend foundations, we'd like to extend that up to third grade. It goes K to three, we started at K to two, and so we'll move, move that up as well. And then you'll see the Empowering Writers there. Another big thing that we're really doing at the, at the elementary level is increasing the literacy block to two hours. So one thing that came out of the survey was results was just not enough time for literacy amongst the elementary. The generalists that spend a lot of time having to teach all different subject areas, so the principals are gonna be working really hard to get that time into the schedules. But you'll, you'll see the other recommendations here. And we talked about doing it in terms of a two-year trajectory, a two-year plan, and then some events that will, some things that will happen annually. But you'll see the Adopting Empowering Writers, and then the Common Lit is instructional resource and, so you can see the rest of that there. I'll let Dr. Wasz do her part.
So based on our needs and actually some of our strengths, our recommendations really center around increasing project-based learning in all of our courses. We've really seen some really nice student-centered classrooms develop out of that PBL focus in 11th grade, so we really wanna see that in all of our classrooms. The authentic skills that are focused on are really gonna help our students to succeed not only in high school, but when they leave high school as well. And that's one of our focuses in the English department. We also realized that, and especially for the next year, we realized that we don't have a lot of formalized reflection processes built in. So that's some of our recommendations as well, is to really
For the students?
For us, actually.
For faculty?
Mm-hmm. For the English teachers. So, and to meet with the, with the eighth-grade teachers and to really have that vertical communication
Sure.
set up, making sure that we're actually doing what we say we do. We know we do it, but it would be nice to actually go through at the end of the year and say, yes, we've done this, we've done this, we've done this. We don't have that formalized process yet. So that was one of the recommendations that we found for ourselves. And then we also have our, we have two-year plan, and then we have got something that we're gonna do annually, or two things that we're gonna do annually, is really just to make sure that we're going through every year and taking a look at the texts that we're offering for our students, making sure that we continue to offer texts that are going to increase our student engagement, and so that our students really see themselves and have a chance to see others as well through the texts. So it's more that, sort of that, literature is mirrors windows and sliding glass doors theory.
Thank you. I think that's it. That's it? Any questions?
I'll have some questions from the committee.
Thank you for being so thorough. Just a comment. Very thorough, amazing.
I noticed, I'm sorry, I mean, sorry.
No, 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 I was just
I noticed in the elementary recommendations, a great deal of professional development. So that was extensive, but it wasn't in this presentation, but it, but it's in the, it's in the deeper. So I can see that we're talking about a couple new texts, K to three, and then the Lit, and then, but there's a massive amount of PD there, too. So I was trying to, how does that all weave in? Because time is, is the fleeting thing for all of us, whether it's summer work that is being committed to by all levels and some of Lit work, but how do we get the PD during the day? So I don't know of any comments on that.
So I'll start, and then you can jump in if you'd like. So we've, it's a, it's a very valid point. There is a lot of professional development that will go along with these adoptions and with pedagogical shifts that we have. So at the elementary and middle school level, we have planned for our August PD days, so we will have one full day with Empowering Writers. Hegarty is a supplemental program, so you won't see that in the memo, because it's a small supplement. There is a small training that's required to go with that, so that'll be on the opposite professional development day. And then we will use our PLCs and our grade-level meetings to keep that sort of the sustainable PD. The Common Lit, do you wanna talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so that, we're gonna work that PD into the second day that offsets Empowering Writers, too. So, and again, it's a shorter, it's a shorter period of time. So with Dr. Mello's scheduling finesse, we've been able to kind of fit all of that in. And then the, the big thing for teachers this year is gonna be the continued learning and conversation that's gonna happen through the MTSS and the PLC structure that we're now have in place at the elementary schools and the middle schools, because I just met with my seventh-grade English teachers today, and it's a lot to undertake when you're looking at tackling, learning new, new programs. And so although the initial PD is great, it's always overwhelming, and it's always a lot to consider. So we will use that PLC time throughout the year to say, all right, look, how are we doing with what's happening and what's coming next? And how are we gonna prepare for what's coming next? And so I've kind of told all the teachers that, you know, change is, is hard, and we just have to be patient with ourselves and know that this first year might be a little bit messy, but we're gonna try and front-load some of that professional development, but then continue to work that in throughout the course of the year, so that we don't just, you know, one-shot it, drop it and run. But there's a lot of learning that the teachers are gonna do this year, but I think they're really excited for that on the, on the ELA side. That was something that came out in the surveys, is they didn't, just didn't wanna, a program dropped in their lap or kind of told what to do without any direction and support. So we tried to be aware of that as a committee and building in the professional development opportunities, even though it is costly. But I think you really get a lot of bang for your buck when you invest in your teachers.
And as you know, Richard, there's summer curriculum work. So we are front-loading some of the summer curriculum work, but to your point, we will also collect feedback from the teachers throughout the year. So there'll be more summer curriculum work next summer after they've lived through a year with these resources and continue some of that work. So they, this group and our group had priority in the budget for the summer curriculum work, and there was, there's a lot to do.
And I appreciate what you said. So my perception is that's daunting, right? That was like, wah, I did that. But, but you actually said something, right? You just used one word about, I think, you think they're excited and motivated?
Yes.
Maybe you didn't say motivated, so I'm adding motivated, so. But if that's the perception, I think that's incredibly powerful. Because it's, it's not, it's easy just to buy a book and throw it on a table, but it's a whole nother thing to integrate it into instruction in, with great fidelity, right? So I appreciate the motivation, the excitement, and I, my big take on the whole thing was that you went pretty deep on a lot of questions. You went in and out of questioning a lot to get to a place where we could come around, you could come around to where your focus was gonna be, and hopefully get buy-in to that focus, because that's a challenge with all of our educators and the whole school system. So if that's what you have is buy-in, then that hopefully will give you the energy to move forward.
I think one of the most impressive things was when Karen mentioned having the different vendors come to share their resources with us and inviting all the teachers, not just those who are on the committee, which means it's on their own time. It's after school, it's late until 5:00 PM. And the attendance that we had at those meetings, right, everybody? People were there, they're really invested in this, they're hungry for it, they're excited about the change. And I think the hardest part was just prioritizing the work, which took a while. We actually added an extra meeting just so that we could
I'm glad you did.
Yes.
It was a lot of work, but
Yeah.
I feel, I feel good about the place that we, that we landed, and I think the committee members do, too. Wasn't easy, but I think we're in a good place.
To that end, I guess my, my question is, in terms of fidelity to the, as Mr. Pearson rightly pointed out, ambitious recommendations, it's full. What happens at the end of 2024? I mean, with the committee? And, and, you know, do you have a mechanism for checking in to say, that reflection piece again?
That's one of our
Okay.
That was actually one of our recommendations, is to develop that process for
Okay.
us to check in, at least us to check in, check in with our faculty, with probably not the committee, the full committee, but yes, to have that formal check-in process about halfway through to the next review.
And K to eight also has a district literacy leadership team that was developed last year when we contracted with a company called The Hill for Literacy. And so we worked on kind of pre-setting up some of this ELA curriculum review work. And so we developed this team that goes K to eight. And so we did meet with them once this year. Again, my absence kind of made that a little bit less possible, but once this spring, and we will continue to meet with them next year as well, and, and have them be the touchstone for for some of this work and how teachers are feeling and all of that. And the other thing, too, is the literacy specialists at the elementary and the middle school really become the kind of go-to people that are always touching base with the classroom teachers and kind of reporting back to me how everyone's feeling and what was doing, doing, and being able to gather that informal information. But our district literacy leadership team will also do some of that work next year.
And I'd love to add that, and you can probably jump in here, too, Dr. Berdros. Years ago, we did have a mechanism, and it was because our curriculum cycles are six years. And so we did have a checkpoint, because typically we write a three-year recommendation plan, to your exact point, and they were called our curriculum steering committees. And we would release people, and we would do a check-in at that midpoint to see where we were with goals. And they were very, very helpful and very, very effective. I think as we've started to do more digital resources and more things that are coming in six-year bundles, we hadn't felt the need as frequently to check in. However, I think what you're going to see tonight, I know Mr. Yugna and I were just talking about it, and what you've just said is important. Sometimes it feels like you have to wait till the sixth year to ask for something or talk about something. And by having that lever, I think what we've uncovered through this process is sometimes communication that would seem easy and clear maybe breaks down, and maybe you think you're asking for something that you need to ask for it formally, and maybe it actually already happens. Or maybe you think you need to wait for six years to ask for something, and really it's just a matter of bringing it to the table. So I think it's a great point to have sort of that check-in. The Hill for Literacy and the district literacy leadership team is also a great mechanism. But to have that check-in, I think, is a really important recommendation for us to follow up on. That will affect all the areas, not just literacy, which is great. I also wanted to add, I didn't talk about Dr. Was's department's professional development. We have, thank you to Dr. Was and her team, figured out a schedule of professional development because that one is a little bit more meaty than we can cover in our, just our professional development days. And so we have different people going at different times, and it's also offered in person and virtually?
Right now, it's a synchronous online course. In the past, it's been in person, but I think...
And in the past, it's been in person and very difficult to get to. So this has been a huge innovation that allows more people to access the professional development. And we also know that you need to be part of some of the other professional development that we have going on in the district in August. There's, you're right, there's only, there's so much to do and so little time.
So, and that, are there any concerns with, because I had the same feeling you had, which was there's a lot of stuff that happens this coming year. Are there any concerns with perhaps a less, less positive outcomes in the short term while you build for the longer term? And what do we, if that is a concern, what do we do to address that?
So I think for us, our goal over the next two years is to fully transition our courses over to PBL. Knowing that we need that training first this year, we aren't going to make a lot of changes. We're going to make some changes, but not major changes in terms of PBL. That's for next year. So we can see, once people get trained, once they kind of play around with it, once they get their hands dirty, then we can kind of do that full transition in the following year, and hopefully we'll be able to find all the problems and difficult parts and iron them out a little bit for the full transition. And then the third year is probably where we'll see, you know...
Start to feel.
Yeah, exactly. It'll, that's what we're hoping.
Well, that's where I was going with my question is, I just, and I, Dr. Berdros has heard me say this way too many times, but, and I hope you all feel empowered as leaders and teachers that if, if at the end of two years, it's, if you're two, you're doing the thing, but you're walking real ugly, and you can smooth it out over the following year, that's fine. I mean, as long, it's one of the things I loved about all aspects that we look at in the district is, as we've seen with your report, you take your questions seriously, you take your goals seriously, you take your recommendations seriously, and you take your work seriously. And but sometimes things take longer than we think they might. So as long as you're doing good work, and you feel like you're moving, you all feel like you're moving everything forward in the district forward, then please, you know, give yourself patience if you need it, so.
For sure. And I think the elementary looks really beefy, but when you break it down, it's not for every grade, right? So like, the Hegarty's just K1. One of the things that the literacy specialists will be working on is the resources to support reading and writing on the Bit Literacy website. So it's not, everything's not for everyone. So I feel like we're pretty good, but you'll notice that a lot of them say begin, begin, because I am anticipating that moving into the next year or even the following year. So we did have a lot of conversations about trying to hit the sweet spot of not too much, but not too little. Because the survey results, again, really, teachers want something. They want, they want, they need some things. So we're trying to walk that line, but hopefully we're in the sweet spot, but we'll see.
And what's coming out of, what it sounds like is coming out of a lot of this is, at the same time you're adopting the new curriculum, you're also looking at the methods for adoption and recording, cataloging those, and consistently evaluating which ones were effective, which ones do you want to reuse as new educators come into the district, or as people move into different roles within the district, or as you start to look at six years out, or five years out, what's coming next? Which I think is probably the biggest piece of this, or the most exciting part of that, is what works, right? What are the processes?
Please.
So one of the other things, one of the questions is talking about the check-in, that I think that it's important to continue to bring back our plan for success and having the one-year action plans. Both of these two leaders here have been part of that. So when you look at two of the four pillars, the teaching, learning, and pedagogy, and the diversity, equity, inclusion, it is threaded throughout. You have those check-ins, you're going to have those action plans that are going to mirror the recommendations that are coming out of these curriculum review cycles, too. You see the equity focus in here when you're talking about being representative in the literature that's engaging, seeing students themselves in the literature that they're reading. All of that weaves together. You'll also hear elements of that when principals come forward with their school improvement plans, which is all based on that. So nothing is done within a vacuum, and it's all very purposeful.
Yeah. Even like the relevance and the pieces of the PBL, it all ties back into that. That's a really good point. And one thing that you just made me think of, Rob, is evaluating what things actually work. One of the biggest questions I think we wrestled with was, we've had foundations in place for K to two and a light rollout in three, and we've invested a lot of time in that. The teachers have had a lot of training in that. We have a lot of resources in that. And it was really the question, do we abandon that? Or do we supplement it with something a little bit more to get it where it needs to be? Because we knew where it wasn't totally effective. It was good, but not great. So that's where the Hegarty comes in. So I do think we do that, and this process really lets us shine a light on it. And I just, I don't know if any of the teachers wanted to add anything about the process or any opinions that you might have, because you're sitting here and you were a huge piece of this.
Huge.
And, wait, before you do, thank you so much.
Thank you for all your time.
Sorry. I'm not waiting my turn tonight.
The only thing I'll add is that the teachers are very excited. They've been asking...
Wendy, we need you to be at a mic.
Do you mind? Actually, I would love to hear your comments, please.
Introduce yourself.
Thank you, Wendy.
Hey.
Hi.
Hi. Wendy Smith, literacy specialist at the IGO. The teachers are very excited across the district to get into a new curriculum, new pedagogy, just really, they're just kind of chafing at the bit. They've been chafing for a while to kind of change the ELA instruction, curriculum, delivery materials. And really with the reports with the science of reading and everything, you know, changing and going back, they want this. You know, it's going to be, it's going to be messy, but we looked at full programs, and they weren't going to give the teachers the flexibility to bring in those great pieces of literature and different things. So here, we can take the pieces that we love here in Foxborough, that we know that are great for our students, and then enhance it. So that's all I have to say.
Well described. Thank you.
Can I ask another question? Please, always.
Is it unfair to ask about PBL now? Because you have to explore it more, but are you able to describe what, how that looks differently? So I'm trying to get a picture in my head of where the big differences there for that.
So...
Or what it might look like?
So our 11th grade has transitioned. I can talk actually about what I do in my AP Lang class. The task is to find a problem in the community, in their community, that they have to solve. So they find a problem, they come up with a proposal for change, they do some research on why it's a problem, how long has it been a problem, what are possible solutions, what might work, what might not work. And then they write a paper, and they do a presentation to an audience who has the power to affect the change that they're proposing. So that is, it builds in all the skills that they need, but it gives them choice, it gives them a voice, it gives them an actual chance to make some change. I know several members here have been audience members in the past couple of weeks even. So it's, the focus really is building in the skills into a project that allows students to have a voice, pursue questions that they have themselves, not that we decide are important, but that they decide that are important. That's kind of what PBL looks like.
Yeah, so I got that part of it, in using the, your staff to help guide that PBL process for them through that English classroom. Okay, I got it. Okay. Yeah, makes sense. I kind of assumed that's what it was, but I wasn't sure if I had it totally grasping. I know we're throwing PBL around, like, how does that look like in an English class, right? We figured it out what it looked like in the science class or in the science project of a grade.
Right, and I keep hearing that, like, English is, people don't do PBL in English. And I'm like, but it's a perfect fit. It's, we have so many questions, we have so many things that we look at, we have so many texts that we read and so many perspectives. Why don't we do PBL in the English class? So it actually works so well, especially because they're able to get out and communicate and speak and get into the community. It's a great place for PBL.
Well, that's great. That's my naive take, because I had it in the science class and the engineering class. You know, I had it all there locked in, but you just clarified it better. Thank you.
May I just add an example? So we did get to see many different presentations, but one of the ones that really, and Mr. Yugna was there as well as Mr. Hyer, that really was quite interesting because of watching this in the AP Lang, was moving from, in the past where we were a bring-your-own-device, BYOD district, to why aren't we one-to-one? So that was a presentation that was done a number of years ago by one of the students. This year, the presentation is, why are we a one-to-one, and why can we not bring in our own device? I prefer my device and do not want to have the school-issued device because maybe I have a Mac, as an example. And when we had, they had to go through all of the research and interviewed, I mean, separate interviews. I had been in a separate interview with Mr. Hyer on that. But the interesting thing was asking the student, what came out of that? What did you learn from this experience? And their answer was, there's so much more than we ever imagined. It really is very layered. And they were able to find out that what they thought was very different than what they learned through that process. So when we talk about real-world skills and really digging into something and going in with an open mind, and thinking about, well, what are the other implications or things I didn't even think about? So the learning that comes through project-based learning, or an example like Dr. Was gave just then, it really does come out loud and clear in the end.
And Dr. Was is very modest, I just have to say. I know we have Project Lead the Way, and we have PBL things now. She started this work with her team pretty much as a trailblazer in the humanities and went to the Buck Institute, which is now PBL Works, which was the gold standard. So the work you've done is really incredible, because I do think people say, if you can do it in the humanities, they say, oh, of course I can do it in science, or, yeah. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? Anything else from, that you all would like to add? Thanks. Okay.
They will need your vote, though, as far as curriculum adoption.
Yes.
Yes. So if you look at the memo, you can see, we have broken this up over two fiscal years because we have money because of COVID. As they were saying at the PTO, we actually had some money, so that actually worked out well, since we do have a pretty big purchase in front of us. The geodes decodable text, we're fortunate that we're in the spot where we do have the funds, because each classroom will be able to receive their own set. It's like having your own incredibly focused, purposeful classroom library. Is that the best way to describe it?
Absolutely.
So you'll see that where we're getting them in K1 and where we're getting them in two, just sort of as Karen said, you'll see that it's not for every grade, everything. But these are the core resources that we will be looking for your approval to adopt.
And we should do this in two, two line items, or...
It's two fiscal years, right? So, yeah.
That's what I was thinking. Okay, fine. And then, please.
And the FY23 is already built into our current budget that we approved?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. All right. Then, can I enter, can I do the motion? Or you can.
Yeah, well, anyone can.
Okay, I didn't know if I was allowed to.
I would move that we approve the $56,591 expenditure for FY22 for the ELA resources as listed.
A second.
Thank you. All in favor? It's 4-0-0. And then in regards to FY23, somebody want to...
You're on the roll. Go for it.
I would move that we approve the $63,526 FY23 item for ELA resources as detailed in the package.
A second.
All in favor? 4-0-0. Tough room. It's you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank all of you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for all your work.
Great work by all of you.
Good job, everybody. Congratulations.
Yeah.
That's a lot of work. Well, no, I think I'm, thanks. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Kelly Dust, just show her the...
Next up on the agenda, we have the visual arts curriculum review. Come forward, and ye shall be heard.
It's stapled differently, Rob.
Yeah. Well, see, now we have a side-by-side comparison. It's a good experiment. Hi.
Yes, yes, it's okay.
Very excited to welcome the art team.
Project-based learning in action.
It was, right there.
We are going to shift the slides.
You could say what they said, but with art words.
Yes.
But that's too much.
Allison's really trying to make an introduction.
Dr. Mello, would you like to introduce our guests?
Well, I'm welcoming them to the table as they join us. Thank you so much for being here. Mrs. Kelly Arcasha, our art department head at Foxborough High School, and she's K to 12. Really, I have to just give her a shout-out. She took an innovative approach to the way that she initiated this curriculum review. I felt that I learned something from watching her lead this, and I'm very excited for them to share with you. They are visual artists, so they originally had 76 slides, because there's a lot of visual things that they wanted to show you. But...
We also have you to thank for the formatting of...
Yes. Yeah, she's done some really clever things and with her team, and I think you'll find that the processes, you'll see the overlap and the similarities. One thing that didn't get highlighted as much, although it's written all over the ELA report, is the work around the essentials and identifying the essential standards. You'll see it everywhere in the recommendations. That comes, to go back to Dr. Berdros' point, comes out of our work with Ken Williams on helping us identify where we need to focus our efforts each term on our standards, and and what are the mastery learning objectives for our students. In the arts, I think we have so much to learn from mastery learning, because everything is iterative in the art world and the music world, performing arts world. So for them, I think it's a natural fit anyway, when we think about that. But defining the essentials has really been a big core piece of our work that we've started and different departments are in different places, so I think you'll see that as well. So I will let you introduce your fabulous team, and without further ado, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Mello. Wow, that was an amazing introduction. And thank you, school committee members, for having us here and this opportunity to pause and assess our curriculum. We do that all the time as artists, where we step back and look at work and then come back into it, and design thinking too. So thank you for this opportunity to look through our curriculum. So I have an amazing team. Art doesn't happen on its own, so I have Steve Doherty sitting right next to me. He's our 7th and 8th grade teacher at the Ahern. And then next to him is Sherry Polisino, who's one of our Foxborough High School art teachers and also one of our National Art Honor Society advisors. Then Clara Schuster, who teaches at both the IGO and the Taylor, and Linda Scotland, who teaches at the Burl and the IGO. So thank you. Thank you for having us. So as Dr. Mello said, we started this a little bit differently. Art is all about asking questions versus with starting with answers. So we started with a big question. If we looked at art as a brand in Foxborough Public Schools, what is our brand? So who are we? How are we representing our students or teaching our students? Who are we within the district as in supporting the strategic plan, working with the whole child in the learning? And then also, how do we align? So we're very fortunate to have monthly meetings where we do meet together vertically and we get to have these conversations about alignment of our curriculum. But looking at, you know, this kind of metaphor of us as a lighthouse, so if we're all aligned, then we get to the point where the graduate is somebody who's like the beacon of our light. If we're not aligned, then that's not going to work. And then what are we putting out there into the community? So that's where we started, was the brand how, who, what, and why of our department. After we went through that, we did our data collection, and our data collection was mostly done through surveys, so much like Dr. Waz talked about in the ELA curriculum. We surveyed, we actually surveyed students. So we surveyed our stakeholders, our target audience, so we surveyed students. We surveyed 2nd and 4th grade students at the elementary school level, 7th and 8th grade students at the Ahern, all of the high school students currently taking art. In addition to that, we got survey responses from 168 parents and guardians in Foxborough Public Schools from all the levels, and then also 30 survey responses from alumni. So we had a pretty broad range. And then we looked at the new Massachusetts curriculum, so you'll hear them talking about that. That's a big change for us. If we look at the last six years, there's a couple of huge changes that happened to us. Obviously, what everybody went through in 2020, the changes with remote learning, everything like that. But also, Massachusetts changed its curriculum frameworks. They used to have standards that we've been doing for over 20 years. They now adapted their standards to be more like the national core standards. So those came out in 2019. We had just started looking at that before March 2020. So now was our chance to go back and say, okay, where are we aligned to the new standards? So after we looked through all our data, we revised our vision statement. We had come up with a vision statement six years ago, but we revised it. If you look through this, you'll see language like the whole child learning. Again, this harkens back to our strategic plan. Also, you'll see things in there for adding a broader range of voices in our curriculum, again, going back to our strategic plan. And then just thinking of the arts, not just as a space where we make beautiful things, but a place that fosters innovation and is a bridge to learning to other content areas as well. So you should hear that in our findings of the different areas. So I'm going to let each teacher talk about their sections, starting with K through 4.
Hi, I'm Linda Scotland. Our findings were really that we had to work on the curriculum and make sure that it was aligned with the standards and there was continuity. So what we start with is going to be what they use in the middle school and the high school, so it's a good foundation, like the lighthouse. Also, that voice was very important, allowing the student to express themselves verbally and in their pictures. So if you look at the aprons up there, that was 4th graders' final project of creating something on there that they felt that they connected to in the art classes, something they had learned that they wanted to express on there. And this is the types of things that are changing with the new curriculum. Also, sorry, just a little blank out. It's been a long day. Allowing the students to have choices and introducing new curriculum that would include more cultures and more different artists. And so, Clara.
Yep. So one of the things we felt was important is there's two teachers between three elementary schools, and we wanted to make sure we had that continuity and that we were using the same vocabulary, that we were, you know, making sure that no matter what elementary school the students went to, they were going up to the middle and high school with the same knowledge. So we, when we surveyed our students, we asked them what art vocabulary they knew. We were really happy with the findings. We had an overwhelming amount, I think it was 96% of students that could name art, you know, content-specific vocabulary. So that's a great start. We feel that we can, you know, we can definitely use that as a foundation to build upon. That'll kind of come up in some of our later slides, so I'll save it for then in terms of our recommendations. But we were really pleased with that strength, because that is something that we do need to focus on in the new standards, so that will help us align our current curriculum with the new standards. The next finding was about the critical thinking skills. I think there's, you know, when people think of the arts, sometimes there's this tendency to not really, to kind of not really understand how broad the impact can be. It doesn't just have to happen in an art classroom. It doesn't just happen in an arts-related discipline. It can cross over into other areas. And that, we were, you know, we were glad to see that a lot of students felt that they were encouraged to use those critical thinking skills, those 21st century learning skills, not only in the art class, but outside of art. And we had some great student quotes that I think will be showing up later in the slideshow that I think as a teacher, you're like, yes, we got there. You know, we still have room to grow in that area. I feel like that's probably the biggest area out of the three that we can really work on and emphasize, but it is nice to see that we're reaching students in that area, even though we want to grow that. And the last finding that we focused on was personal connections in their artwork. One of the things that, you know, Linda and I feel is important is that our students feel that they can connect with the artists and the artwork that we're showing them. And then in turn, like, that builds their confidence, so that they understand that art isn't just something like we copy or we learn about, but art is a personal expression, and that they feel that they can express their personal voice in that, their interests, their personality, so that when they, you know, like, for example, we had the art show, you know, last month, and you want kids to feel like, oh, it's not just the same project from everybody, that there's something unique that they're expressing, even if we're all learning about the same thing, that they can put their personal vision on that, you know. And it's with the younger kids, like, you know, we try to kind of narrow it down so that they don't get overwhelmed, but yet they still feel like they're, you know, they have that opportunity to express themselves.
Yeah, and this is a great example. The quotes went down to one quote. So it, the quote is, when I'm in the classroom during any subject that I'm making decisions, that they feel that art helps them, you know, helps them in their decisions. And I think it goes back and forth, because personally, when they come in and I use rulers or math, or they're bringing that in, and then they have to apply something they've learned in a different situation than the classroom. And so sometimes you can spot and help them, and they go, yeah, that's what it is. So I think it's a great place for the student to learn a skill from the classroom into the art room.
And I think also, too, to the same point, every, like, every project you do, it's not just one decision you make. Every step of the way, there's a decision from, like, how do I draw the shape? What color do I use? What do I want? You know, the subject, and so that's, you know, that's a lot.
The tools, the materials, right. And the, these are pictures of Frida Kahlo. The students learn about the artist, and in her paintings, she always puts colors and things that represent her. And so I had them write down on a piece of paper all the things that they felt represented them, whether it be a color or something they do, and I said, when you look in the mirror, think of the expression you want to see on there. How do you, you know, and it was wonderful.
Yeah, and to add to that, when I did the project, I said to my students, you know, think of this as, if you want somebody to know you, it's not just a visual representation, so put in your picture what you would say to somebody if you were meeting them, you know, for the first time, like, what your favorite food is, what your favorite animal, you know, we kind of, we broadened it, so, you know, they could really find out, you know, what they wanted to express. And these two images are obviously from a lesson that we did on Claude Monet and Impressionism. And one of the things we were, you know, thinking about is, art is a lot of choice, right? So we don't want to just be like, we're studying Monet, we're all going to do it the same way. So we showed them a wide variety of images by Monet, but then we also began introducing more contemporary artists that work in a similar style, so they're seeing that connection. And also, again, to that point, these are 2nd graders doing this work. And it's nice to give them a choice without being like, making them feel like they're lost and they've got too many choices. But I just, you know, I mean, it's great to see the difference. You can kind of tell their personality by looking at the images and also how they chose to use the technique. And then the last slide, where we have our recommendations. As I said earlier, you know, we really were pleased with our survey results from our art vocabulary. One of the things that we want to do moving forward is create that consistency between all three elementary schools. So to do that, we want to work on creating visual supports that will be consistent across the three schools. So we'll, like, say, for example, if we have posters of our art vocabulary, we're going to have the same three posters in each school, and thankfully, we have high school students who will support us with that. So that, you know, that's a positive thing, but we don't want to just sit back and say, we've got this. We want to move that forward and create the consistency. The next thing is that we have been using the Studio Habits of Mind. I believe we introduced that with our last curriculum review. And that has been really positive. As you've seen, we've been able to reach the kids and make those, you know, 21st century learning skills happen. But we do want to keep that going, you know, so that students really understand that it's not what happens in art happens in art, it's what happens in art can happen anywhere. And the last one is related to personal expression. You know, we've looked at our curriculum. We had a chance to look at it in the fall and see kind of the places where we aren't getting as many voices, you know, for the students to, you know, learn about. So we want students to be able to personally connect with that, and to do that, you know, we've talked about other, you know, ways we can introduce a wider variety of artists into our curriculum. One of the, you know, the ways that's easiest for us to get started on that is instead of just focusing on one artist, being like, well, if we're teaching about this style or this movement, we can show, you know, multiple artists, and maybe, like, if we show five artists, students will connect with maybe two of them. And so that's, I think, a great way to kind of start off with that. We also looked at broadening the cultures that we cover. We had, in the student quotes, we had one student that said they would like to learn more, you know, they'd like to have more opportunities to learn about their culture through art. So that was really, I think that was, you know, great that that student was aware of that and communicated that to us. And we knew, we knew that we had room to grow in that, but it was great to see that a student wanted that. So.
It's a lot of curriculum for K through 4 to just stop and change it all. So, you know, when all of a sudden you start realizing, as you're moving forward, wait a minute, I'm starting to move back, so now I need to adjust, and you need to introduce a variety. And I like that now I'm introducing current artists as well as older artists and comparing the two same style together, and the students are looking at it saying, oh, wait, that artist is still alive?
And I think the great thing about that is when we focus on DEI, we're aligning with the district plan. And we obviously, we want that to happen, and it's just naturally happening for us. So I think that's, you know, that's really positive, and I think, you know, we'll be able to move forward with that.
I was trying to figure out the one on the bottom right, though, on the last slide. The abstract, whatever that was. I don't know if it was, I thought there was two eyes there.
Oh, it's, we did Aztec suns.
Oh, okay.
They learned about the sun.
I was trying to figure it out. I saw the sun, and I was just trying to make it all work. Okay, thank you. There were like two eyes.
So next we have the middle school findings.
So with the middle school, in addition to the DEI component that we've all been looking at, our three main focus questions were, how can we align grading for 5 through 8? Is there a more effective way to schedule our classes to balance digital, traditional media, and to reduce time between courses? We find that if a student has art first semester of one year, there's the potential they won't have until second semester of the following year, and now you've got 12 full months in between courses. And when we're scaffolding things up and we're trying to build the things, we spend a lot of time doing reviews. So we're trying to look for ways that we could sort of mitigate that. And the last question that we looked at was, can we start having a school-wide initiative or project once a year to explore social issues through art? Again, trying to build up. As we go through the courses, with the new social justice courses at the high school, this seemed like a perfect opportunity to sort of have a fever system to get into that. We do that with our graphic design elective, and if it's just a logical area, just start taking a look at. We polled all of our 7th and 8th graders, which, for our particular questions, I thought was super helpful. You've got the 7th graders coming fresh out of the 5 through 6 program, our 8th graders who have gone through that as well as finished at least one year with me. At the time we were doing it, some of them were midway through that year with me, so they had a good spot to kind of compare where we were at with things. The aligning of grading is actually a question that's carried over from our last curriculum review. It's super important to me. It's something I've been looking at since we got in here. What we have is, at 7th and 8th, it's letter grades. At 5th and 6th, it's pass/fail. And, you know, you know from talking to the students when they come to the room how they feel about that, but the survey really showed us that a strong number of them really took a pass/fail course to mean it's less than. And what we're doing is, we're doing the work to have the grading. We're aligned with our rubrics. We're aligned with scoring things. We're trying to take this inherently subjective course and make it as objective as possible. We're giving the students goals and things to aim for, so they know what they're trying to shoot for. But then at the end of the day, when we make it pass/fail for two years, we come up to 7th and 8th grade, it's letter grades, it's a shock to them. And no matter how many times we talk to them and try to prepare for it, I actually go down to the room for 5th and 6th. I talk to them, and then I would say the first week of every year in 7th grade, there's a large percentage of kids are shocked by the fact that it's now letter grades. And when we go through there, there's actually, you'll see, one of the quotes up there is, all you need to do is to put in your 50% to pass the class. That student obviously needs to spend some more time in the math class, because we know there needs to be at least a 60. The point still stands. One of the other things that we found out that I was very proud of is, we got a large percentage of students that would be interested in pursuing additional art classes, projects, and things outside of their regular art class. So, and then just a great quote from one of our artists in a two-point perspective project there.
And this artist, I believe, won one of the street painting squares.
Yeah, so she, if I, third place for age, and then I want to say second place for theme.
Foxborough Street Painting Festival.
And possibly getting an award Friday. We've got three examples of a portrait project that the 8th graders did this year. This kind of goes into, when we were looking at the DEI components of things, it was, it's a great opportunity to kind of really look at your practice. For me, I've really shied away from guided drawings. I don't want to do that thing where it's like, I'm drawing this. Now you can draw this. I want to amplify student voice. I want them to be able to show us what they're feeling, what's important to them, things like that. And when we look through the projects, it's great when you go down the wall and you see a large representation of different interests, different people and things like that. But what I found is, when it came to showing of examples in the art history component of things, I had been sort of stuck in a rut of all the things that I had seen, which is a very, like, European.
Western canon.
Yeah, focus. And what we've started to do is, we're starting to switch, what are the examples that are in the room? You know, I took a lot of art history courses through my time, and it's always been the daunting part of, with the time we have, how do we touch on the art history part, where time is so limited? And what we've kind of come through with this process is, it doesn't have to be as intensive. Can we just switch up the images that are around? Can I swap out the posters that are hanging up in the room? Can we swap out the boards more frequently? Can I take a look at the examples that I'm showing in the projects? And a lot of times, you know, I think as instructors, when we look at these things, there's technique that we're looking for. This is a good example of this technique. And now I think it's taking the time to go, in addition to the technique, what are some of the themes and what are some of the images that we're showing? Like, I'm not necessarily going to look for, just as a really great example of value, I'm going to make sure that there's a wider range of examples. So not only are we amplifying voice, but students can see themselves in the examples, so they know these things are achievable, they know these things are possible, and they can relate to it. And again, just speaking to that component of being able to express themselves through these pieces. So this shows just some examples. We've got, you know, our traditional media as well as our digital media.
So students can start Photoshop in 5th grade.
All right, so our recommendations, again, really aligning the grading from 5th and 6th to 7th, 8th. As I said, 5th and 6th is already doing the work. We're getting letter grades for the projects. We're just not having letter grades on the report card. A change to letter grading for that particular class would just make the report card look the same across the board. All of the classes would be letter grades, and it would continue up through 7th and 8th grade art. Additional art opportunities through electives and B Corp to sort of bridge the gaps. As it currently stands, there are times when I have students that are in my elective, in my B Corp, and in my art class, all in one semester, which is great. I love them. I'm happy to see them. Sometimes maybe three classes is a bit much, but whatever, that's great. The problem with that is, that means there's a whole other half to the year where they're not in the art room at all. So I think we need to kind of take a little more time looking at the schedule. Can we space out the time that they're in there? Introducing a school-wide collaborative art project. So the actual wording on that particular survey question was, would you be interested in participating in collaborative, possibly school-wide project that had to deal with carnivals, social issues, or middle school curriculum in general? So it leaves us a lot of range to decide what we can do, and the interest is high for that. So I just take that as a win. And also, if we look at the previous recommendation of trying to find a way to bridge the gap of time in between, it's just one more thing that we can do to get them in the art room and looking at these things. Introduce a broader range of voices and more opportunities for personal connections, focus on DEI. As we said, we're kind of switching things up. More images, more often. One of the things that I started doing this year is a compare and contrast. I kind of stole the idea from heading into Kelly's classroom up at the high school. But like, if we're looking at a classic piece, is there a more contemporary piece that we can show next to it? Can we have the students compare and contrast things between them? It's just a win across the board. I mean, you're going to see more pieces of art. You're going to be able to draw more connections. You're going to be able to show twice as much stuff in the same amount of time. And they're just fast ways to do it. Compare and contrast exercises, super fast. And it doesn't have to be an intensive art history course or lesson to do it in.
And then we have high school.
Hi, excuse me, I'm Sherry Paul Cino. So in looking at our current curriculum, we had come up with three focused questions. Two of them relate. The first one doesn't relate to the other two. So the first one specifically focuses on identifying and modernizing safety measures in, in the equipment also in the art rooms. More specifically, the pottery and sculpture room because we use a lot of equipment, like the kilns. Those get fired, they need to be ventilated properly in order to make sure that they're safe spaces to work in. We also need to make sure we had enough outlets so that way there's just more access to tools throughout the room. And then the second two focus mostly on our AP students. So how can we, how can we identify best practices to prepare students for taking AP courses through the lens of sustained investigation? So back in March of 20, or back at the start of 2018, the AP art curriculum had changed. And so I feel like we need to change with it and need to look more at sustained investigation and possibly get recertified so that way we can better support our students through that lens. And then that brings us to our second question is how can we then evaluate and assess art through the lens of sustained investigation? So focusing on the studio safety and equipment in the 3D studio space, we have had 28% increase enrollment in our pottery and sculpture classes, which is awesome because I love teaching clay classes. It's phenomenal. However, it also brings problems where I don't have enough clay anymore. I don't have enough glazes to support the 28% increase in my classes. I've run out of materials many times this year. Luckily, we were able to find funds elsewhere to get us through. The kilns, because we are teaching so many courses in that room, the kilns are running full time. We have one kiln that runs to 100%. It's full functioning. Whereas the other one, it can, it has some functionality, but it could definitely be updated to be better. But with that many classes and running the kilns like four or five days a week, I mean, it's a lot. So therefore, we got to make sure that they're checked routinely every year, that the ventilations are checked and they're cleaned out. So that way, again, that stuff isn't venting into the classroom, but it's ventilating properly.
It's the lifespan.
Yeah.
No, what's the lifespan on your kilns currently with the models that you prefer to get?
Honestly, if you take care of them, they can last a really long time. They, I don't know how old our kilns are, but I've been in the high school for, since 2012, and they're the same kilns.
Good.
Yeah. Let's see. And then with the increased enrollment in classes, so for example, my current pottery and sculpture two classes have like 10 or 11 students. The next year, there's 20 in each section. And then I also have 12 students taking AP 3D art. So there's an increased enrollment there. So we need more wheels because I don't have enough wheels to support the students taking my classes. But thank you to Phil. Thank you. We were able to find funds and we actually already have the two wheels purchased. So now we'll have a total of 10, which I'm really excited about. Okay, so we surveyed the ninth through 12th graders that are currently taking art, and we got a lot of really positive results. So 98% of the students reported that they feel they can express themselves freely and openly in the classroom, whether it's class discussions, critiques, just open-ended questions. So that's, it's really nice to feel that they have a home there. 100% of students reported that they feel their projects were assessed fairly, which, I mean, that's pretty awesome, 100%. And then 99% said that they were supported and offered extra studio time when needed. We did have, you know, a suggestion when asked about the range of artists that are covered in curriculum. And most, like 84% of students felt that we covered a range of artists, but we still had some suggestions. So we had a student who suggested Haitian art be added into our curriculum, maybe just so that they can see more of themselves and their work. The most significant, significant thing I learned while taking art is that everything serves for our growth, even though I do not always like the outcome of a piece. I've learned that, learned to understand that by pushing through and finishing the pieces I do not like, I still learn a ton about my skills and experimenting to, to make my future pieces. So it's great that students are learning through the process and not just focused on that final product.
So these are all examples of high school work?
Yes, I can speak to the pottery pieces. The ones, the ones all the way to the right were designed by a student who wanted to bring her own culture into the project. So the vessel to the right there is a Middle Eastern-inspired coil vessel. And then she designed her mug, which is on the left there, to kind of reflect a similar-looking vessel, drawing inspiration from the architecture.
She got a scholastic.
And she won a scholastic silver key.
She's a freshman. She won a scholastic.
Yeah. Oh, my gosh. Fresa. Yep.
So we have 13 different art courses offered at the high school.
Yeah, we, I mean, a lot of digital classes, photography, graphic design, senior ink, variety of fine arts and painting courses, all different pottery and sculpture classes. So we definitely have something for everyone. And then in the last four years, we've had artists win a variety of things. So 70, we've won 73 Scholastic Art Awards, a National Scholastic Art Medal. And then the piece that you're looking at here is an American Visions in Voice nomination. And that's usually only given to five Massachusetts art students. It was a piece based on Fear of Needles. And just like all the other curriculums, we like to make real connections. So in the last four years, we've connected with Romney Ukraine, the Peace Corps worldwide, wise schools. We've worked with the Memory Project, connecting with Pakistan, Afghanistan, Cameroon, and Nigeria. Something that I work closely with is I help with the Empty Bowls Project, where we build pottery, we glaze it, we sell it. And all the funds is either donated to the Foxborough Food Pantry or the past two years, we, we provided Stop and Shop gift cards to students within our own school who really needed that extra food to get them through. So we've raised over $1,000 just through that project over the course of the years. And then just thinking about our National Art Honors Society students, we've had over 1,100 hours of community service that is art-based as well as art-based events that they've participated in. And then there's also a lot of real-world learning happening within our class. So this is just a variety of ways that the design classes have designed for the town and the school, from the music department to different things in the Foxborough Public School, to designing T-shirts, the Rotary Club, designing for Foxborough Police and Fire Department. So they're making connections with the community as well as within our school and different departments. And it's, it's what they would do if they were designers.
And we've had multiple students saying that, who have gone to school, like the alumni quote here, that because they were able to use the Adobe Creative Suite and they had access to that license, that they were given advanced classes as a freshman in college. They either took senior classes or the teachers gave them access to the software that other students didn't get.
And then when we surveyed our FHS art alum, we had asked them what kind of transferable skills they felt like they had gained from the high school. And so these are a handful, from critical thinking to problem-solving skills, digital software applications, color theory, critique process, time management, mindfulness. So they felt they were well aware of these and had like a little bit of an edge over the other people in their, their classrooms at a college level. So they felt prepared. All right, so the recommendations that we have for nine through 12 is to update the 3D studio classroom to accommodate the increased enrollment. So we got the two new wheels. We need more clay, we need more glazes, we need more everything. We're asking for an increased supply budget by 20% to accommodate the material needs for the increased 3D class sizes as well as the amount of money it costs to buy, you know, digital printing supplies. It's just, there's more kids. Supplies cost more, and so we're getting less supplies, but we have more students. So we need to be able to support our enrollment. We also want to introduce the Foxborough High School Building-Based Art Show. So we haven't had one in some time, and we're looking to revamp it right at the start of COVID. And so now that's brought back to the table and we're finally, finally going to follow through with that within the next couple of years. And then myself and the other AP teacher, we suggest getting recertified so that way we can better support our AP students and teach to sustain investigation.
All right, so K through 12 findings, a lot of this we've touched upon before. Our first question was looking at the new curriculum and seeing where our alignments are. And then how can we incorporate more viewpoints and perspectives into our K through 12 curriculum? So that's touching on that DEI. What are some untapped potentials to integrate our curriculums, creative thinking practices, and holistic educational approach with other disciplines? And then what are some untapped opportunities to partner with parent volunteers and/or professional artists? So as far as the curriculum goes, we have lots of strengths. The new curriculum, like I said, the new curriculum frameworks, it's broken a little differently. It's broken into four artistic practices, creating, presenting, responding, and connecting. We have a lot of strengths and a lot of areas of alignment. So even though in our recommendations and our action plans, we talk about updating our curriculums, it's not a lot of stuff that we have to, to write the new parts on. It's just adding those indicators and kind of aligning it with the framework itself. So as far as things like creating, obviously, we're going through all the brainstorming work and the critical thinking techniques, presenting. Always students are refining their work. Again, it's, it's process over product, responding. Students discussing and analyzing artistic work from elementary school, where they're even looking at picture books and an artist's work, all the way up to high school. And then connecting, so relating their personal experiences to making art. Future opportunities as far as creating goes, like Sherry had mentioned, creating, we need to focus more on sustained investigation. As she had mentioned, the portfolio requirements for AP have changed. It used to be breadth and quality and concentration. And now they grade it on something called a sustained investigation. So our AP students are still doing well. They're still getting threes and above, but we're not seeing as many fives as we used to see, once they changed it.
Can you talk a little bit more about sustained investigation?
Yeah, Sherry, do you want to talk about what sustained investigation is?
Yeah, so it's, it's a focus in, in the AP students' artworks. So they choose a theme to explore and discover things about. So in the past, they would choose a theme and they would just make a piece and then move on to the next. Whereas now, they really want you to explore the piece that you're creating and consider, well, what else can I do to this? How can I push this? How can I investigate this a little bit further? What can I learn from this? And then, then move on to another piece. So there's a lot of revision involved, whereas before it was they complete a piece and they were done. Now it's, now it's like thinking of, yeah, it's looking at it, reflecting, think about what worked well, is it really working with my theme? How can I push it a little bit more and change it?
Sure.
So some of the sustained investigation now where, like you were saying, it used to be piece, piece, piece. Now some of the pieces, they can actually turn into sustained investigation or like sketchbook pages, which show their note process.
Lots of progress, lots of sketchbook, lots of reflection.
I like that. That's, I mean, it's a little bit like what they do in IB.
Oh, yes, so.
I looked it up and it said, like, how many pieces do you need? It said 15. I was like, okay, wait a second.
Because it's showing their evolution.
That part of the AP exam is they actually have to show it.
That is the exam.
Yeah.
The, yeah, so the entire year is the exam. The artwork is the exam. There's no test at the end.
It's awesome.
You are taking the test the entire year. And so, yeah, your portfolio is your exam. What we upload from sketchbook, you know, brainstorming, references, research, looking into artists that connect with what you're doing to the actual piece. And then just reference photos of, you know, the progression of the piece. And then even more photos past that.
And they have to, it's their commentary about it as it goes through.
Yes.
Yeah, it's not staying along.
There's an artist statement. They really have to be thoughtful and make purposeful decisions.
Nice.
Do they struggle with that?
Oh, yeah.
It strikes me that, that I could see, I could see, you know, after five or six times of going back at it, I can, I can see that, it reminds me of practicing my saxophone. After four hours on the same lick, I was like, okay, I'm done. But I had no choice. So, so I can see them wanting to morph in a different direction and take other influences. But now they're being forced. They're kind of, well, interesting. Seems like it would be a challenge for them.
But I feel like they learn more, like, since this change because they are investigating what they're doing and why are they doing it? And what is it connecting to? So like, there's more thought into it versus, all right, I'm really good at this. I want to make 15 pieces that showcase my ability. Like, that's great, but like, what else? Like, why?
Yeah, good, well said.
What, I'm sorry, what percentage of students end up taking AP?
I don't know the percentage.
So our AP class right now, there's about 12 students in the AP class?
I have, I have 12 next, well, yeah. So this year I had, I had 11, next year I have 12. I know Sean's numbers are larger.
Yep, so next year Sean has 12 and you have?
So we've got about 24 in total next year.
And that's all primarily juniors and seniors, or is it?
Yes, correct, correct. So we have the courses, the 13 courses, we have them tiered too. So a student can take pottery all the way up to senior year. That'll lead them up to AP 3D. A student can take graphic design all the way up to AP 2D. So we have it tiered that way so that students can take it their senior year.
Okay.
And it's nice because the, the AP courses, 3D, 2D, and drawing, we have scheduled it so that they meet the same period. So even though they're working in different mediums, they're all critiquing together and looking at each other's work and pulling off each other.
Right. And is there, is there concern that by, if the recommendation or one of the strong recommendations coming out of this framework is focusing on such a small percentage of the overall art students, is there concern about what the rest of the students are doing in relation to the curriculum? Because I know one of the things you started with was back in March, where you were right in March 2020, the beginning of the pandemic, we were looking at how aligned are we with the mass curriculum? Or mass curriculum is changing to be more than national curriculum? That's what I think I heard.
Right.
Right?
So I think that sustained investigation actually fits really well with like studio habits of mind, which comes out of Harvard and Project Zero, which is the idea that these are all the transferable skills that artists do. And one of them is perseverance.
Okay.
So. And I think the push with like the assessments with sustained investigation would be more the honors level and advanced levels too. So we wouldn't put it in, in like entry-level foundation classes.
Like it can begin in those intro-level classes where we can start to ask them questions to make them think about their choices. So we can start to, start to get them thinking that way. So when they start to take those advanced classes, it feels a little more natural and then.
Yeah.
Fall right into it, yeah.
So presenting for future opportunities is a huge thing for us. Presenting on the new mass standards is more about, you know, we're used to doing the school-based art shows and stuff like that, but the, the new standards are saying, are students curating their own work, even at the elementary school levels? So now starting to think about that, that's going to be a big thing for us. And like Sherry said, with the high school, having a high school art show. We, we've had high school art shows at the Boydin before, and then we were having it at the Art Studio and Gallery. But those are such small spaces, now we're looking for a more inclusive, bigger space for high school art show. The other buildings. Responding, some more opportunities for students, again, a new one, to create their own rubrics and their own assessment tools. And then connecting, including more of a DEI lens, looking at artists, like the other teachers had talked about, adding more contemporary artists in a wider range, moving past that Western art canon that we're so used to. And then DEI, we have a lot of strengths on DEI, so that was positive. We use the culturally responsive sustained STEAM curriculum scorecard that Allison gave to us. So it was a whole assessment rubric that we, or scorecard that we went through. We actually. assessment rubric that we, or scorecard that we went through. We actually each scored our own levels, and then went through that and pulled out all our strengths and all our opportunities. So strengths is that we're starting to include artists, like Clara and Linda had mentioned, things like adding Alma Thomas to the Monet lessons, and not just staying with Monet. And then connecting more to students' identity. We have been providing more spaces for a personal voice, introduction of designated art history days at both the middle school and at the high school. Students love talking about art. The introduction of the social arts and social justice class has been amazing with the music department. The 10th and 12th grade students having those global collaborations, you saw on there, I mean, students actually worked with students in the Ukraine. Students actually worked with students in Afghanistan. So having those connections. And then the National Art Honor Society students, they do a school-wide exhibit every year at the World Language and Culture Night, the Monumental Art Show. That's inclusive to everyone. And then the families who come, we actually have them judge the show. And then lastly, the Foxborough Street Painting Festival is very inclusive, and we invite all these different families, not just from the area, artists of all ages. We've had, I think, over 20 different towns who have been represented at the Foxborough Street Painting Festival. And then opportunities, including more resources and materials for different voices, different artists, PD, having more PD on contemporary art, how to talk about contemporary art, especially at the different age levels, exploring best practices for balancing process-focused lessons with class discussions, creating a K through 12 curriculum map, so we can start looking at the artists that we've covered, and then reaching out to other districts who are currently have strong implementation of DEI in their art curriculums, and what are they using, what are they doing, and looking for them, to them for PD collaborations. And then also, Linda and Clara had mentioned the vocab visuals. We are working, like they said, some of our senior students are currently creating visuals for their vocab work. So if they're using like materials like brushes and paint, they actually have images of those on the board, which will help our ELL students. So that's more like infographics and stuff. Focus on the whole child learning. So again, we surveyed parents. We got 163 parent responses. 80% of the parents surveyed agreed that their students learned skills in art that were useful in other classes. That's awesome. And it's something that we're putting out, so I'm glad that they're receiving that, too. 80% of Foxborough parents and guardians surveyed agreed that their students were valued, heard, and the opportunity for personal expression through the art. Again, something that we're pretty proud of, because we're hoping that that's what we're going across. And then as far as opportunities go, our biggest opportunity, and we look to the music department for this, because they have a very strong parent association, one thing that we're hearing loud and clear is that even though we have all these events, that parents might not be familiar with them, or the websites, or things that are happening at the high school. I am going to point out that, you know, we have, on the survey, 44% said that they weren't familiar with building-based art shows, but that's, we also did not have art shows for two years because of the pandemic. So that's going to be swayed that way. But that's still an opportunity for us. So trying to get parents to help us as well. And I did want to include in here, a little bit with the pandemic, just because we are a process or performance-based course, performance-assessed course, changes that we did have to make during the pandemic. I think that speaks to some of the strengths of our teachers and the curriculum, and also things that we are implementing still, moving forward, and looking at and saying, what tools can we use carrying forward? So during the pandemic, our teachers, in two weeks, we actually created a whole new website, the Foxborough Art Pass, which is still up and running. And that had, every single day, we had a daily drawing prompt on here. Every single teacher on here was part of it every week. Everyone was responsible for doing a blog post with a lesson that students could go on and follow. And then there was pages full of resources and virtual learning. And we've had students from other towns and parents who have found our site and reached out to us and said, this is amazing.
We had our virtual gallery, too.
We had a virtual gallery, too.
Which was really actually a bright spot in the pandemic. It was so nice to see their artwork.
So this is an example right here, which I thought was super cute. We had kids, we encouraged kids to send us their work, and then the teachers would post it on the site. So we were all responsible for running the site. This is a student who, because we didn't have art shows, decided to host their own art show in their driveway during the pandemic.
That's awesome.
So like I said, the site, digital learning tools, new digital learning tools that we implemented. We had weekly department meetings, just talking about the site and collaborating on some issues we were seeing. Coming back in September 2020, because of all the safety regulations, all these teachers got together and, in I would say like a month, figured out our supplies and were able to order supplies and put in bags 1,900 individual art kits to send home with the students, so that they had access to supplies. Yeah.
Yeah, that was crazy.
We have pictures of the boxes and the teachers packing things up.
I really wish they individually packed oil pastels.
And then obviously the virtual and the hybrid classes. So I pulled in here some examples of student artwork during the pandemic. So these are things that students were creating at home. I love that it gave us a glimpse as to what it was like for them. It's almost like this kind of time capsule they're going through. And these first ones that I started with, I purposely started with these because these are due to, when we added the Creative Cloud license, because we had added that license, these students were able to access, a lot of them were able to access Photoshop and Illustrator at home with that license, even though we went remote. These are some middle school pieces and elementary school pieces. All right. And then as far as recommendations going, we need to update all our curriculums. Again, it seems like a huge task, but we're pretty closely aligned. We just need to change those indicators and add some things in the areas that we need opportunities. And then also implementing more resources in DEI and art education. Big thing, implementing a parent or guardian art association to help support getting the message out, so people in the community know about the shows, and know about the events, know about all the things that we have offering at the high school and the different schools, and also help in support with finding like grants for artists coming in. And then updating instructional equipment support, and then piloting a K through 12 DMS. So that's a carryover from our last curriculum review. We're looking at a data management system. We met with a representative from Artsonia, found out that they can house our whole districts, they say they can house our whole district's worth of artwork on their cloud for free. So what that means is we may potentially be able to carry a student's digital portfolio from kindergarten through senior year, to be able to see alignment and collect that data of their growth in art, which is pretty awesome.
They have no idea what your art department does, so we'll see if they can do what we
It was an interesting conversation. Because specifically, I had asked them about video. We do stop motion, and even just one minute of stop motion video at high definition, times 400 of my students, times however many years.
Yeah.
She didn't blink. She said it'd be fine. So.
It's all in the cloud. It's all in the cloud. Think about Amazon. You know, we're still small.
Good point. But just the thought of that would be insane to be able to see that. So then here is our findings. So curriculum, the positive findings are alignment, Studio Habits of Mind, like they had mentioned, reconfiguring lessons already with the DEI lens. We're going to keep moving forward to that. The digital lessons with the Fine Arts lessons, I know Steve's done a lot with adding iPads, like he's talked about the stop motion, also the 3D printing at the middle school and STEAM-based projects. The alumni survey have, was praised the amount of courses we offer at the high school and the depth of the courses, and having the students be college and career-ready through the courses. And then the addition of the two new classes at the high school. Ms. Mize Pakla talked about the social justice class. We also added a visual journaling class to add, to support students with their SEL. And then needs for curriculum, we need to update our curriculum. The AP teachers' licenses, the studio classes, we need more resources for DEI, and then the opportunity for middle school for more enrichment. As far as instruction goes, strengths, critical thinking, obviously, again, the Studio Habits of Mine, the vocab that they talked about, differentiated instruction. We have a lot of adaptive classes in art, which, you know, we're very proud of having our classes be very inclusive, and having the students support each other in their classes, having a collaborative learning authentic space, the range of 2D and 3D, innovation. And then for identified needs, we talked about the vocabulary, so adding ELL resources, and then guides to align. One thing with the visual critical vocab list is also making that transparent to other departments, so that they can see what vocab we're using and how we can support them in their learning. And then assessments, range in assessments, using Studio Habits, elements and principles, using Teams and OneDrive, which is a carryover from remote learning, using exit tickets. And then needs, obviously, the big one, five through six, we need to change report card grades. It is the only area that does pass fail. So K through four is standards, and then seven through 12 is grades. And then professional development, needs for professional development, UDL training, DEI, again, working on that vocab, and studio safety, going off of what Sheri had talked about, and then support with documenting student work. And then we have our proposed timeline just for the upcoming six years. I do want to mention that a lot of these things, we have actually already checked off on summer. We've kind of been ahead, and Dr. Mello and Mr. Yugna have supported us on this. So things like Sheri mentioned with the kilns, we've already worked on the vocab lists, the wheels, outlets have been replaced. Questions? Sorry, that's a lot for you guys.
You're very thorough. It's a shame they're not passionate about their work, isn't it?
We've got a six-year, six or eight-year timeline. How long is it?
You have a six-year timeline by season.
Well, mine's on my iPad. I kept doing this. Wow, there's another year. There's another year.
If we had 77 slots.
It was pretty good.
You could have had 77 slides, but you would have had to come to the June 28 meeting. So it would have been your choice, but you would have had to come to the June 28 meeting. Okay. So I think we helped you. It's really what happened for him. Fifth, sixth grade, why were they, why have they been pass fail?
Good question. I, we don't know.
It's been pass fail as long as I've been there, and I'm not sure when it started, to be honest.
When I was in the middle school, it was grades. When I taught, I taught there for three years, and it was grades. And when I left, the next year it changed to pass fail. So.
It was a while ago.
It was, yeah, that was quite a while ago. That was 22 years ago.
We don't even know why they changed it.
Okay. Yeah, that was my question, is what was the, because I, you know, the number that you threw out there is, makes perfect sense, right? But it's a, it certainly is eye-opening, and it makes me, first question I asked is, is this the first time we've asked that question? So good for you if it is, or if it's not the first time we ask, good for you guys for coming up with a plan to change it. So either way, it's a positive. And I, just my, my personal opinion is, I'm always amazed whenever we have the teaching learning highlights, and some level of student and educator comes in and shows us what they did. I remember a few weeks ago, when you guys were here, right? And then pursuing an opportunity to make not only the parent community and the school community aware of just what kids are doing, regardless of their innate talent, but just what they're doing and how they're expressing themselves. Whatever we, my opinion is, whatever we can do as a committee to support getting that word out, we should do. Because every time, I mean, I look at the slides here, I, personal preference, next time, I don't need the note taking. I would rather have the full picture slide, because I would actually take this and hang it up in some of my places, because I'm really, the art that's here, the art that was, some of the things that were shown up there, the social justice show blew my mind when I went. So I always want more opportunities to do that. So whatever we can do to support getting that word out, with the work that you guys are helping our kids and the voices that you guys are helping our students find, I want to know what it is, even if it's not through the committee, if it's just through me, because it really, it just inspires me every time I look at it. So thank you for making that a part of your plan. And I'm done now, Brent, I promise.
Mr. Chair, may I just ask?
Ask Dr. Mello, please.
I'm sorry. I like how they both ask, and I just blurted out. So I wanted to comment on that. Thank you guys for following the rules.
Yes, Dr. Mello.
Just as a point of clarity, and this is my oversight, so I apologize. If we do make a change to the report card, that's actually an action item, not an information item. So if it's something, when we get to the end of the meeting tonight, if you feel like you want more time to think about it, because I didn't put it as an action item. But it's definitely, I know it's really important to them. You wouldn't have to come back if they decided to wait until next time, just so you know. But I just want to clarify that.
I'm going to show the other slides that didn't get shown tonight.
That's right.
I can show the rest of the slides.
I said, I just was going to say that I'm usually a speed bump when it comes to that, but I'm comfortable voting on that tonight, if other committee members are. And if we want to wait till next meeting, then fine. It's certainly ahead of next year, so.
Well, I'll speak up. I'm an art guy, art music guy, but I'm not comfortable voting on it. I would, I would just, I think some, some truly introspective thought about it, because I totally get it. I got the survey results. I hear everything you're saying about it, so I'm not trying to change it. But there seems to be, in my mind, I think a transition from whatever's happened K to four, then five to six, and how that whole thing plays out. And I think it would be worth looking at in the whole scope of grading in fifth and sixth grade. So, but, but I'm not, I'm not going to discount what's been said, that it's the only one that's not graded. So I appreciate that. I just, I'm not sure why we need to speed through it tonight. We have until first term of fall to make a thoughtful decision, just so we're not shooting from the hip. With no disrespect to all the work that you've done.
And I do think the most important thing is they've already done the work to make sure they would have things to produce grades. That would be the biggest hurdle.
Well, essentially, for years now, the grades have been going in. It's just that the grades translate to a P or an F. They don't translate to a letter grade on the report card. If a parent drills into power school, they can see the individual grades.
So the work is being graded now. It's just not being recorded that way on the report card. That's what I had heard.
And by the way, I heard that 100%. So I do appreciate that, because that does say that there's a basis for it, which is a good place to be than to be just blowing in the wind, right? So I totally respect that. It's probably there. It's probably articulated from the get-go, from day one. Here's what we're looking for, right? So it's kind of all there, ready to fly. That's what I heard from you. So I appreciate that.
You may have teed up a future conversation, though, that will be coming your way sometime in the future, in a way, about standards-based report cards in the elementary, or what we have. We don't have them at the middle school. We would like them. That is a process. Dr. Burdo's can speak to that. I think they would love that, because it speaks to everything you do. But we're not quite there yet.
Yeah. That's fine. No, we welcome that discussion, obviously. Any other comments or questions from the committee?
No, thank you all for what you do. Clearly, you do it with passion. And my daughter, speaking from a personal perspective, my daughter was obsessed with pottery. Thank you.
I was looking at your last name. I'm like, I think it's Sophia.
No, you got that one right.
Grace was in my class forever.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Please, Dr. Mello.
I'm so glad that you brought the pandemic pivot piece in there, because I don't think that people really understood in our specialty areas, what went in to, if you take the elementary level, up until the spring, when we look at that, they were 100% online. We know how hard it was to teach students remotely, online. They did that with kindergarten through fourth grade, every single day, not seeing their students unless they were at bus duty, because they saw them online every day. All of the art kits, working with principals to be able to get that, to get them out to families, and all of the other work, digital. And so we got to see that behind the scenes. But I just, thank you for everything that all of you did. I don't think that people really understand the magnitude of what that was like to teach art remotely, and the different levels that you did. It was really impressive. And when we talk about the motivation here, to be here this late, I know that we did this because the 28th, as Rob said, was after school is out. But it also just shows your dedication and passion to be here this late, and to be able to show what you've really accomplished with our kids. So it's, it's just understated, really, what your department has done through the pandemic, and then what you continue to do.
Well, thank you so much for being here, and thank you for your thoughtful...
And thank you for your thoughtful, deeply thoughtful work. It shows. It shows, and it matters. And as you rightly pointed out, what goes on in all of your classrooms and studios definitely spills over to all academic areas and even more importantly, their broader lives. So thank you for taking it that seriously, because it is, so.
Mr. Chair, what is the process? Are we going to look at the 28th as a time to review the change to the grading? Are we looking at some point in the fall or as part of our summer? What's the process for getting that on the agenda so that we can?
Right. That would be our next, our next agenda item. No, after the MOA is upcoming meetings. And I'd like to, I would take recommendations from folks about when we would want to put it on an agenda. And that's one of the reasons I wanted that kind of as a standing item, in case there were things like this that came up. So let's discuss it maybe then.
Okay.
And then we'll dispense it in due time. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you, principals, for staying, too.
Yeah, principals, thank you so much for being here to support your very dedicated faculty. It matters. I appreciate it.
Congratulations on being done with this. Fabulous job.
Yeah, you want to do it again next year? Look ahead to your seventh.
Thank you to our principals and, well, our principals for saying, I was going to say assistant principals, but they're all principals. Thanks for being here so late.
Next on the agenda is a vote on the MOA from the Foxborough Education Association. Dr. Berdros or Mr. Yukna, would you like to clue us in?
Sure. Just this is what was presented at the last meeting.
Yep.
Just as a reminder, if it's new for anyone that's listening at this point in time, a number of these clubs and activities are listed in our current CBA, Collective Bargaining Agreement, at the high school level, but not at the middle school level. And in order for them to be pensionable for our faculty, they need to be listed in the CBA, which they are not. And by doing this MOA, it allows it to be pensionable and will be able to go back and be retroactive for those that have retired. I don't know, Bill, if you have anything else to add to that?
No. I mean, it's strictly a requirement of the MTRs that we do this, and if we don't, then as Dr. Berdros says, they just don't get to count. And we've always had the standard on the high school level. We just, when we chose to expand on the middle school level, we did it in tiers. So we just called the program a Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three. We didn't state what they were. And therefore, that's why the MTRs didn't accept it.
No, and I believe Wednesday's presentation was clear for me. I don't have any questions following from that. Do other committee members? With that, let's have a motion to...
Can we motion it just from the presentation from the June 8th meeting? Is that, would that be, the motion would be, right?
As presented on the...
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the June 8th meeting presentation of the memorandum of agreement for the Foxborough Educational Association.
For clubs and activities?
Oh, for clubs and activities.
Do you mind? Yeah, just, is that all good?
For clubs and activities.
I'd second that one.
Great. All in favor? 400.
Thank you.
Thank you for dealing with our awkwardness administration.
That's good.
That's good. So next on the agenda is upcoming meeting items. And so on the 28th, are there standing items that we have that we must attend to?
Say that again.
Are there standing items that we, reports and things that we must attend to? I thought we had a...
Standing item.
I didn't think so.
I need the elementary principal coming with that sort of standing item.
Right, correct.
Yeah, because we try, I thought we tried to put a lot of those, like, regular calendared reports into this meeting.
Really, it's the introduction of Danielle Morrissey as far as IGO.
I mean, there has to be other ones, but right now I can't think of them.
Well, the other ones are going to be the Plan for Success, and it's going to be reporting out on the Plan for Success. That's one of them.
That's, thank you. And then how do committee members feel about extending the discussion on the item coming from the visual arts presentation tonight and having a discussion on the grading?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, can I ask? Dr. Mello, how do you feel about that? Can I ask your, I don't want to put you on the spot.
No, not at all.
But I want to see, I mean, Rich brought up a good point, but of course, based on the survey, you hear the information, you're like, oh, sure, that's great. But it's, you're right. It's definitely something that we should, we should think about, like, what are your feelings?
I'm sorry, are we, can we do this? Can we have this discussion right now, because it's not an agenda item?
Oh, no, we would have had it before.
So should we just put this on the, to move it to your next...
I'm sorry, I just want to be, because it's not, we can't get into too much detail, my understanding, because it's not been a published agenda item.
I think that's fair.
Then I, my plan was to put that back on the agenda for the next time, but if any committee members want to...
It was part of the agenda. It was part of the presentation.
We could, okay. That's fair enough.
We're not voting, because that was not, that was not noted as a vote.
So reopening that.
So her talking to it is fine. You're not voting on it. And it was part of the presentation, so.
Then, okay. Then please.
Okay. So I think there's three separate things that I think. The first one is, it would have been helpful to have the visual of the current report card so that you can see how it looks like an outlier, because it really does. And it has been a point of contention for many years. They, as soon as I got into this role, that was one of the things that they wanted to talk about, and they feel very strongly about it. The second thing is, I think if we're going to collect survey data, we've always felt very strong that that becomes actionable. If we're going to seek your opinion, then we hope that we can act on it. However, the caveat is, I know that Ms. Frazier has been eager to investigate the process for transitioning to standards-based report cards since she took the position. COVID sort of pushed that to the back burner. I think that process is very labor intensive, and Dr. Berdros can speak to that. I don't think that will happen in a year. I think that she would love it to happen in a year. So I think from sitting in their seats, them having to wait for that next step might feel frustrating to them. I can also see the other side of it, to change something twice. However, you'd be changing it to put it in line with the rest of the report card anyway, almost as a reset before you went forward. So I'd love to know your thoughts, because you've lived through the standards-based report cards before, too.
We would not be able in a year's time to move a middle school to a standards-based report card, even if you rolled it in with grades five and six, which I think would make the most sense. It takes a lot longer. It's a huge mindset shift. And there's the work that needs to be done in order to be set up for that, when you're talking about rubrics and what does it look like, because current grading, an A is not a four. It's apples and oranges. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done there. There's a lot of communication that needs to be done with parents and families as well. So I think to that point, if it's a matter of having to do that twice by not waiting, I completely hear what they're saying. When you're going pass fail is a different mindset.
You'll see value. I understand that from their perspective, 100%.
So I don't know if I'm answering your question, but I'm trying to answer it by saying that if you have to do it twice, I think it makes sense in this situation.
Me, too.
Because otherwise, they would be waiting for much longer.
I agree.
Oh, and they've already done the work. Are they...
Correct. They've already done the work.
And they're doing it anyway. It's just a matter of they're now having to actually transpose what they've done and then say, okay, well, it's pass, or it's fail, when they've got much more detail for students and for families than what they're already communicating.
Yeah, and I appreciate very much that you read through all these reports and that you take the time. So I don't feel in any way that it's a bad thing that we wait to vote. I think the reason why I personally overlooked it was because they didn't have any big purchases. So there wasn't a memo to say, oh, we have to call attention to this one seemingly small thing, but it is a big thing.
So, Mr. Chair, my only lens on this, because I'm all, I really understand, and especially you said it's the only outlier, it just would seem to me, from an administrative perspective in managing it, that it should be presented maybe by the principal with supportive guidance and just to make sure it can all happen. I'm not saying it's a big lift. I'm not saying that there's a programming lift or anything, but that's where my mind was going. Is it just that simple, that the school committee can just trump in and say, do it? Or is it wise to bring, to bring the experts in the building just to confirm that it can be done? That's where my trepidation was.
It's a great point.
Just confirmation as opposed to like bombing in. That's...
It's easy for us to say, do it.
Yeah.
But they have to actually execute it.
That's right.
And they have to be behind it and feel passionate about it. So clearly, the teachers are...
Oh, very much so, yes.
Yeah.
But I honestly, in my heart of hearts, I suspect it's very doable. I know enough about scheduling and report cards, and it's probably doable, but leaving it in the doables hands seems to be more wise. That's just my...
I think that's really smart. Thank you.
Okay. So however you choose, I think we can talk to that.
Yeah, and maybe they can present it the next, I don't know. I don't know the timeframe.
I think I can share things at the next school committee meeting, and we'll see, you know, if Ms. Frazier's around. But I think seeing that report card especially in context would help.
That's fair. I appreciate it. And then just for other, the other upcoming agenda item that I was going to be asking you either to do in open meeting on the 28th or via one-on-one emails is, are there things for our July retreat that you would perhaps like to see as we try to cobble together our time together for that? Okay.
Okay.
That's it. Other matters? Mr. Yukna?
Very quick one. We have our summer institute coming up, which is a professional development opportunity. And it will be the evening of school committee that day, that we have our first day of the institute. So far, we have, I think, over 19 districts registered to come and participate. And the reason I bring it up is because our logo for the institute was designed by one of the students in the senior ed. So, and we had Mega Math Day today in first grade at IGO, and they also designed the Mega Math Woman, who is our superhero for Mega Math Day for first grade. So their work really gets into every facet of what we do, which is amazing. So, thank you.
Awesome. Dr. Berdros?
Well, I don't know how our teams did tonight. We've got three teams right now that are in the, you know, whether it's the Division Three finals, Final Four, and those with our baseball and our boys and girls lacrosse. So interested in how some of them did tonight and then tomorrow night. Tomorrow night, we have Danielle Morrissey at the meet and greet at the IGO that is from 6:00 to 7:00 in the cafeteria. I know the PTO then has their final thing at 7:00, but we're having that with Danielle from 6:00 to 7:00. She was there all day today, doing interviews, actually, with Dr. Mello and other teachers for openings that we have. And then she was in classrooms and everywhere.
She was at Mega Math Day. She was everywhere, yes.
Last day of school's Friday, in case anybody doesn't know. Half-day. So that's that. And anyone that's our fathers, for Happy Father's Day on Sunday. And where we do have our last day of school on Friday, just really hope that everyone has a safe and wonderful summer. And we just look forward to starting next year of how we've ended this year.
Exactly. Mr. Campfield?
I'm good.
Mr. Pearson?
Good.
So I was waiting for, I was hoping Joey would stay, because every time I give my rec updates, he always asks about the opening of the town pool. Well, I have a good authority, the meeting was last night, the pool should be open Friday for the end of school. So hopefully, everything is all working well. The Founder's Day was so nice, rec and the whole town, and everything was, you know, went off great. And everyone who did all the hard work to put that together, I just wanted to say a quick thank you, because it was really, really nice. And, oh, there was something else, and I can't remember, so I'll see you the 28th if I think of it, but thank you.
Thank you. And I have nothing with that.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? 400. We're an adjournment. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Campfield.